Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to welcome all of you for joining us here at our State Council meeting. We'd love to have our public join us. For the record, it is Tuesday, March 13th. It's a few minutes after 3:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeViert?
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'm going to make one slight adjustment on item, under item A. Item C, we're going to move to new H. Just kind of reordering things a little bit. We'll see how things go and hopefully stay on pace to get through all of them. With that amendment, I would move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, wish you carried. And I'm going to move down to the podium.
Okay, I'm going to ask Carla if you and your group would come and join me at the podium for the reading of this proclamation. So, the Treasure Valley MS Walk has traditionally been in Boise, and this year it's been moved to Meridian. So, it's going to be held at Julius M. Kleiner Park on April 14th. So, I have been asked to make up a proclamation, and I thank you all for joining us. And then I'm going to ask you all to say a few words, or whoever would like to say a few words, just a little bit about the walk. Inform us all what's going on and whatever other details that you would like. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.3 million people worldwide. And the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for more than 70 years to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about and insight into the disease. And whereas in Idaho, more than 4,400 people are living with MS, and that the disease generally strikes people in the prime of life between 20 and 50 years of age. And whereas the cause and course of MS remain unknown, and no cure currently exists, even though more than $974 million in groundbreaking research has occurred for pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure. And whereas the Treasure Valley MS Walk brings together the community and raises funds to change the world for everyone affected by multiple sclerosis. And this year's walk will be held in Meridian's Julius M. Kleiner Memorial Park on April 14th, 2018. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and one that all Americans and Idahoans should support. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeViert, do hereby proclaim March 11th through the 17th as MS Awareness Week in the city of Meridian. And I encourage all community members to become informed and involved in the fight so we can imagine a world without multiple sclerosis. And I signed this today, and I would present this, Carla, to you and ask you or your group members.
Ashley would like to say her own words.
They're throwing me under the bus.
Oh, well, congratulations.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate this. Hi, my name is Ashley Ferguson. I myself have the disease, multiple sclerosis. I was diagnosed in 2009, and I became a member of our society here. With me today are people who have the disease, or somebody important to them has the disease. And we're also the Walk Committee. So, this week is MS Awareness Week, and as Mayor Tammy mentioned, we are moving the walk from another part of the valley to Meridian. And we're very excited about that, and it's going to be at Kleiner Park this year. It's going to be on April 14th. The Walk registration starts at 9:00, the Walk's at 10:00. Last year, we walked in the rain around the parking lot because part of the green belt was closed off, and we still had almost 1,100 people that showed up in the rain. So, this year, we have a lot bigger goals. We'd like to see over 1,200 people, but we'd really like to see 1,500 people. And our goal is to raise $125,000, and we're over our target right now to do that. So, we're pretty excited about that. As of today, this week, there's about five weeks left. If you'd like to join us, we'd be glad to have any of you, and we're really excited to bring it over to Meridian and be more inclusive to the whole valley.
Thank you so much.
And the beautiful facility there.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
This nice young lady that was just speaking, her company, The Griddle Restaurant, is one of the top sponsors, is the corporate sponsor for the whole Walk. So, her sponsorship in this means a lot to all of us, her being the corporate sponsor for this. So, everybody go to The Griddle Restaurant all the time and eat. Because she does sponsor us, and I really appreciate, thank you very much, for doing this.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning it.
And I forgot to say one other thing. You guys talk about sponsorship. One of my biggest sponsors is a member of your group. Genesis and I go back a long way, so she is one of my all-time sponsors. Genesis. How's my buddy Dean doing?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Tell me so much.
And you do not have to stay.
All night.
We appreciate you being here, though. I thought I better clarify that. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published, and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item seven, under community presentation, we'll kick it off with 7A, with a Valley Regional Transit presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Thanks for joining us.
My name's Stephen Hunt, and I'm the principal planner of Valley Regional Transit, and I'm very happy to be here to talk to you about Valley Connect today. So, the purpose of today's presentation is to talk about how Valley Connect can improve or enhance the, support the economic activity occurring in the city of Meridian and throughout the Treasure Valley. And then hopefully we have a chance to answer any questions or discuss that after the presentation. But to begin, when we talk about economic development, one of the analogies that I find most apt is to talk about fire, right? So, an economy, just as a, so a fire burns hot when oxygen is able to be delivered to the fire, and exhaust is being able to take away. And similarly with an economy, the easier you have the flow of goods and people, the more effectively your economy can burn or can work. And that's really the focus of why we're talking about public transit and its role on the economy in the Treasure Valley and in Meridian specifically. Because there are two specific ways that I wanted to mention that transit really helps ease the friction that occurs between the movement of goods and people. And the first of that is that it's an efficient use of space. When we look at the amount of, the amount of space that it takes to move 40 people in individual automobiles, that's about 19 vehicles that it would require, as opposed to a single bus. So, 280 feet of rideaway versus 40 feet of rideaway. It also means that you're able to, to, not just the roadway space that we're talking about, but also where those cars go when they're not being driven. In other words, the amount of, the amount of space that the city and the public entities need to dedicate to parking changes dramatically when you're able to increase the number of people who are moving in transit, which means you're able to bring, again, more, more land and more resources into productive use in the region. The other reason that transit has a really powerful impact on the potential economic growth of a region, of a community, is that it can lower the cost of transportation. So, when we look at the amount of money that we spend on getting, moving people around today, if you look at just the costs for, for gas and maintenance of privately-owned vehicles today, that, we estimate that's about $1.5 billion a year that we spend, that the residents of the Treasure Valley spend on getting themselves where they want to be. When we compare that to the amount of money that's spent on public transit operations, it's about 15 million. And so, what, what that shows to me is two things. One, when we ask people, because one of the questions we get about public transit, particularly in the Treasure Valley, is why aren't we seeing full buses? And why, if it's such a good use of resources, why isn't it overflowing? And one of the reasons for that is because when we look at the, the amount of places that we can connect to on transit versus what you can get to in a car, it's dramatically different. And this, this slide helps to illustrate that. When we say, "Go out and use public transit today," what we're asking people to do is step out of this world of $1.5 billion of freedom and into a world of $15 million worth of freedom. And they, and the customers feel that in terms of when the bus starts running in the morning, when it quits running at night, the fact that it doesn't run on weekends, the frequency that the buses come. All of those things have to do with how, how much we invest in the service itself, the frequency of transit operations. And so, the other thing that this slide illustrates to me is the amount of money that people are willing to spend on getting themselves around, and it's substantial. And when we think about what we're trying to do with Valley Connect is really say, if we as a region, what can we do to lower the amount of money that we all spend on public tran, not on public transportation, on transportation? And if we were able to use that in a more efficient way, can we connect more people to more places at a lower cost and out of pocket, as well as in terms of the amount of space that we dedicate to transportation issues? Because we know that when people are able to rely on transit, as opposed to their own private vehicle for most of their travel, households can save up to $8,000 to $9,000 a year by not having to own and maintain another vehicle. So, that's money that can be used for other purposes, and money that can be used to go to school or to help enhance, again, the local economy. So, how is Valley Connect proposing to do anything about that? The plan is based on, is based on Communities in Motion, which is the regional transportation and land use plan. And in that plan, they've identified about 300,000 hours, a 300,000-hour gap, which means we would need to quadruple our service that we have today in order to meet the demands that are existing today. And so, that's how we've sized this, this program. So, we would quadruple the amount of service in the Treasure Valley, which would allow us to provide service every 15 minutes or better on major corridors across the valley. So, that's the, creating nine frequent routes. And that really changes the way people think about what transit can do for them, because no longer do they have to wait on the sidewalk for an hour for the next trip, but they're able to, or plan that trip so that they say, "I need to leave right now or else I'm going to be two hours late for my meeting." Those, those types of things are real, and when we are able to provide higher frequency of service, it changes the frequency with which people will choose to take transit. We also will be, we're also proposing to make investments in the roadway to help make transit move easier through traffic, so we know that congestion exists today. And if we can get transit to move faster through existing traffic, then that, that does two things. It makes transit more attractive, it also makes better use of that existing roadway, because we're able to move more people through a congested space. The other thing, in addition to frequency that we'll be increasing, we hear all the time from our customers that we need service that runs nights and weekends. And so, Valley Connect would, would improve the amount of service that's available in the evening, as well as on, on weekends. The result of all that is that we have, we've set ourselves a target of increasing ridership by 800% with this investment in, in service. And that's a substantial target, but it's based on quadrupling the amount of service that we're providing, at the same time doubling the productivity of our service. And that, that's perfectly doable when we look at what our peers produce in terms of boardings per hour. And so, we would go from where we are today, which is about 12 boardings per hour, to over 20 boardings per hour. And again, that's achievable because there's a big difference between the attractiveness of buses that comes once an hour and a bus that comes every 30 minutes or every 15 minutes or, or better. And that's how we're able to achieve that, that kind of efficiency. In addition to investments in traditional fixed routes, Valley Connect looks at what opportunities are there to leverage enhancements in technology? So, what, what can we do to build on Lyft and Uber and automation to make sure that we're building a transit network that is for the 21st century? So, as I mentioned, what I wanted to focus on today is really how does Valley Connect help grow the economy? How does it support the communities that we, that we serve? And it starts in large part with what that, what that transportation network looks like. So, I mentioned that we would be making investments in over 100 miles of roadway. And if you look at this map, those, those 100 miles of roadway are along these premium corridors that were identified in Valley Connect 2.0. And you'll notice that virtually all of the, many of the east-west primary corridors between Boise and Meridian would be targeted for that premium level of service. So, Chindon, Fairview, Overland, as well as frequent service on Emerald into Meridian, making connections at both in downtown and at the Village. Also, making connections up and down Overland by Silverstone, by Mountain View High School. And just off the map is where the 10-mile crossing is as well. And so, all of those places becoming more accessible with, with transit. In addition to those premium and frequent services, we'd be making investments in, in secondary services, services that come every 30 minutes, pushing out into other parts of, of the region. So, you can see a large part of North Meridian gets covered. Also trying to extend service down into Kuna and out to Eagle, making a connection between Meridian and Nampa via Cherry Lane and Franklin. Again, expanding the reach of what people are able to access on transit. But the sum of all of those investments, whether they're the capital investments to help make transit move faster, or the service investments to connect the regions, is really how far, or how much are we able to connect people to the destinations they're trying to go? How much are we expanding people's freedom, in other words, by transit? So, when we look at today, so let me take one step back real quick. One of the things, one of the realities of the transit service that we have today is that we haven't been able to keep up with development. As you know, looking at this map, you'll see the yellow lines there. They don't make it very far west, but there's been a whole lot of development that's happened in West Boise and in Meridian. But our transit network has not, has not responded, has not been able to respond to that development in any, in any kind of real way. And so, when we look at an important location such as the Village, there, there is no transit opportunity at that location. In, in Valley Connect, however, we would be expanding the reach of transit to the central part of the valley, making Meridian much more the center of the, of the Treasure Valley as it is geographically, so it would also be in transit. And you'll notice you have, so again, this, this map is showing how far you can make it in 15, 30, 45, and 60 minutes on transit and walking at 7:00 a.m. if we were to start at the Village with the growth network in mind. And so, it really becomes accessible, again, on all your major east-west connections, whether that's Eustic or Fairview, Franklin, Overland. You have connections down on the freeway. Downtown Boise becomes accessible, as does, as does the airport. You also have connections out to CWI and Nampa, better connections up and down Eagle Road out to Eagle itself and Linder. And just off the map, you, there's also connections out to Micron. So, many of the locations that we hear about, people asking for, "So, why, why don't we have service that does this or that? Why can't I take a bus to the airport? Don't you guys know that there's a lot of people that work out of Micron?" And of course, those are things that we know, and we're trying to be able to accommodate with, with a growing transit network and what we are planning for in, in Valley Connect. So, when we look at how well that network would connect to jobs, this is information from the census. It's LEHD data, which stands for something that I can't remember, longitudinal something, household data, something, something. But the, the point is it's identifying where people work and where they live. And if we look at the locations that, where people are going in the, so that you can see the, the yellow highlighted census tracts, people who live in those locations, where do they work and what's the density of those locations? And so, typical places pop up. You can see downtown Boise is there, but you also see Micron out on the far, to the far southeast. But you also notice that there's, so I want you to compare the map that we just looked at. How far can you get? So, the Village is in downtown Meridian, I get that. But how far can you get from Meridian to certain places in time compared to where people are trying to get in those jobs and locations? You'll notice you have, Fairview shows certainly, Fairview as a corridor is obvious there. You've got locations around the mall. You've got locations around, oh gosh, Coal and Overland, as well as south. You can see, you can, you can see Overland going all the way from Coal out, out towards Meridian is, is a popular destination. And when we look at the amount of, here's some other interesting facts when we think about the, the amount of mobility or traffic that happens in and around Meridian. There's about 300,000, not 300, 30,000 people that live in Meridian and are working outside of Meridian, and about 30,000 people who live outside of Meridian and are working in Meridian. So, it's a very balanced kind of flow of people in and out. And then there's about 8,000 people that both work and live within, within these, when I say Meridian, what I'm talking about are these census tracts, which I know doesn't exactly mirror the city's boundaries. But the point is, we have a lot of people moving both into Meridian, out of Meridian, and within Meridian, and approximately 70% of those trips are less than 10 miles. In other words, they're, they're the kinds of trips that we could pick up on the, the type of network that, where we're developing strong east-west connections on all of our major arterials, as well as connections out to the airport and, I'm sorry, on the freeway into downtown Boise, to the airport and Micron. So, in addition to the, to the fixed route connections, we, Valley Connect would also be building on the community transportation options that, that we've been able to develop in, in Meridian specifically. So, we would be looking to grow the Harvest Transit work and, and the other community transportation options that have been successful here, to make sure that people are able to ride between the lines, make those first and last mile connections. We also would be looking for other types of innovative approaches to that. And that's where I mentioned Lyft and Uber, to be able to make some of those connections, to ensure that people are able to, again, extend the reach of, of transit. So, just really quick, I wanted to talk about where we are in the process. So, we presented this draft plan to the VRT Board in January, and they approved it for public comment. So, we've been out in the public since, since the start of February. We've received about 1,200 comments so far. That survey, that comment period extends through the end of, sorry, the 15th of March, so that's Thursday. And a couple of things that we've heard, and then we'll take the comments that we've heard from that survey makes a change, changes to the draft plan, and we expect to present the, the changes to the plan to the board in April. And I wanted to just mention a couple of things that we've been able to glean from that survey so far. So, I mentioned there are 1,200 comments across the valley that we've, that we've heard from. About 10% of those are from the city of Meridian. But 32%, more, about a third of all of the people who filled out a survey commented that Meridian is a place that needs to be connected with transit today. And so, there's, in other words, there's lots of people who are outside the city of Meridian who must be saying, "Meridian is a destination that we're trying to get to." And so, that's an important thing for, for us to be thinking about as a regional transit provider, about how do we connect, not just within our community, but how do we connect our community to the other locations that are trying to get to us? The Village specifically was identified by 17% of the survey, of the people who filled out the survey as a location that needs to be connected with, with transit. And so, we're encouraged by the interest that the public is showing in, in transit generally and in the opportunities that there are for Meridian specifically, to, to really change that. Because, as you know, the only transit service that exists today in Meridian outside of Harvest Transit are the connections that are kind of along the I-84 corridor, Route 42 that comes in and, and along Overland. And so, we are excited about the opportunity to extend transit into, into Meridian in a real way. So, our next steps, as I mentioned, we'll be taking the draft plan to, sorry, the final plan with the comments included to our board in April. And then from there, we wanted to, we'll be coming back to each of our stakeholders and, and cities to talk about, what does the plan mean for you? And what are some options that we can talk about in terms of, what are the priorities that the city has for growing transit within those, within those cities? How can we begin develop, developing partnerships with, with private business owners about the, the value that transit brings to those locations? So, one of the things that we've been doing with Middleton and Star and Eagle is talking about how we serve the Highway 44 corridor. And it turns out that today, we have a service that just runs down Highway 44. It's called Route 44, and it goes into downtown Boise. And it turns out that a lot of the people who are living in Middleton and Star and parts of Eagle, yes, there's, downtown is a popular destination, but so is Meridian. And so, we have been looking at options that actually would take that service from Eagle, up Eagle Road, make connections at T-Sheets, make connections to the, not just the Village itself, but all of the things that are around the Village, Sensi and, and Blue Cross of Idaho. And so, the next steps with those types of conversations is what is the value of that transit service to those, to those entities? And how can we start talking to them about the importance of helping their employees get to and from work and bringing people, attracting people to, to those destinations? So, we look forward to continuing those conversations with our stakeholders. And that is what I had to share with you today. So, I appreciate the time and would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Council questions? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. A few questions for you. How much do you anticipate full-belt out of your plan to cost? Second question is, where do you intend to find that money? And the third question is, when I was on the board about a year and a half ago, I believe that our, per ride, it costs about $7 of taxpayer money to subsidize each ride on top of the fare that was charged. With the 800% increase in ridership, you know, at full-belt out with, with the cost of whatever that might be, how much do you anticipate that subsidy per ride to have gone up or down?
So, the, and take, I'll try and take those in order. The first question was, what, what's the cost of it? And so, we, in quadrupling the amount of service that we would be providing, we would be quadrupling our operating budget, so from 10 to 40 million or so a year in, in transit operations. Which, incidentally, when we look at the amount of money that we spend on student transportation in Ada and Canyon County for public and private, public and charter schools, that, that's about $35 million a year that we spend on getting, just on, on the other school buses for just that segment of population for nine months of the year. Which doesn't say anything about the fact that 40 million is definitely still, it's a significant increase over where we are today. The capital costs for the growth network is about, is about 200 million. are today. The capital costs for the Growth Network is about, is about two hundred million. And those, obviously, they're not, those aren't annual costs. So the difference between operating costs and, and capital costs, I'm sure you, you all appreciate. So we'd be looking at ways of raising those monies that wouldn't have to be done all at once necessarily. But what's not included in Valley Connect is a specific funding plan, as you mentioned, because there's, we, it's, as an aspirational plan, we don't have a specific plan to, to get the money. We, we are seeing this in terms of phases, and we need to be able to say, what's important to the community? How, how much does it cost? And then come back with the question about how do we, how do we organize ourselves to fund that. I'm sure you're aware of all the past efforts that have gone into, into place to try and fund transit at different levels. There aren't a whole lot of new ideas in terms of, in terms of that, other than we are interested in being able to identify specific projects that are, that are of interest to both the community at a public level as well as a private level, and, and try and find ways of raising that money via the means that we have available to ourselves. And so we also realize that that, that means we're not gonna just ask the cities to find this in their budget because it's not there, right? We know that this is, the kinds of monies that we're talking about are not, are not things that we would just be able to find in the budget. So it would be a concerted effort to, to raise revenue. But we, we don't have a, a specific plan for that yet. But that'll be a large part of what the VRT board begins to look at in the coming year. Your other question was about subsidy per rider. And so one of the things that's really interesting about transit is when you're able to get higher performing services. So when we talk about doubling, doubling the, the productivity of services, you'd be having your, your subsidy per rider, if you'd made no changes to, to the fare collection. And so we would be looking at, what can we do to increase our fare revenue, as well as doubling the productivity of our, of our service? So we don't have a specific forecast of what the subsidy per rider would be. But given the, the outcome, if we're able to hit that target of quadrup, sorry, eight timesing our ridership while only quadrupling the amount of service we're providing, then the result is we'd be reducing the amount of subsidy per rider.
Any other questions?
Good.
Mr. Kavner.
Stephen, I'm so glad you're here. You're like an encyclopedia when it comes to transportation knowledge. I, I saw yesterday that the, I think the city of Arlington is abandoning public transit in favor of, of on-demand buses. And I guess, has there, has there been any thought, there's a lot of talk in, in the two-point-O plan about on-demand, but is there any thought or discussion about a public transit system that is without buses in our future? And, and if so, how does that impact a lot of the discussion that's happening right now at VRT?
So the thing to remember about what public transit is doing, it's, at its core, I'll go back to this initial slide. At its core, what it's about is about getting many people to share a common resource, which is a vehicle. And so whenever we pursue an option that reduces the number of people in a, in a, in a single vehicle, which any, any kind of on-demand service, you do really well if you get three to four rides per hour. Because if you're thinking about it, the time that it takes me to go and pick up an individual, take them somewhere, drop them off, go pick up somebody else, take them somewhere and drop them off, you, you just don't have the ability to get the, the, the productivity that you can have in a fixed route service, because you're not asking people necessarily to walk out to the sidewalk. You're not asking, you're not congregating the population in a way that allows you to move them as efficiently as a larger vehicle does. Having said that, there are lots of opportunities that we're pursuing at VRT to become more efficient at that low end of, of the productivity scale. So where we're not, where we're not providing five, six rides an hour, we should be looking at, how can we do that more effectively and, and providing on-demand type services? The example that you provided with Arlington, just, just to put it in scale, they, they said that they replaced their buses and with the on-call via, which is similar to Lyft or an Uber, for all intents and purposes, and they had five thousand boardings a month. We have a hundred thousand boardings a month at, at VRT, and, and we're not at all, you know, the cream of the crop when it comes to transit productivity. So the, the issue is one of scale. And so whenever we look at, at these types of services that are, that are on-demand, we need to be careful about thinking, how can we really, how can we make sure that we're leveraging public transit to the greatest extent possible?
Madam Mayor, additional question. Stephen, you talked about the survey results, which I'm excited to see. And I just, I'm curious, are you planning to share the survey result data with all of the municipalities that are, that are in the valleys, so we can see what our citizens are saying about public transit and what others are saying about public transit in our community?
Yes, yes. And in fact, that's one of the things that we've been, we've become more aware of, is that we hear from the riders about the things that are important to them, and oftentimes that information kind of stalls with us because, because we're the transit provider. And we need to do a much better job of becoming kind of a passer of information, so that the jurisdictions that we serve have a better idea of what people are saying about transit in their communities. Because I feel like we have not always done the best job of ensuring that that, that that information gets to the end of the road, so to speak, and, and you all hear about the importance of transit in your community.
Mr. Burnt.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
So what, you mentioned in, in your presentation that you guys were going to, you spoke about different, or that you were gonna make some improvements, or you're planning on doing some improvements to our, to our roadways, you know, specific priority roadways. What type of improvements would you be doing?
So it would be, the types of improvements that we've been working on with ACHD on, on the State Street corridor, so where they have been putting in transit signal priority, which allows buses to, to move through an intersection faster, would be the types of things we've been looking at. We'd also be looking at potentially doing things to, to make it easier for the, to reduce the friction of a bus stopping and picking people up and getting back in traffic. So that might include things like, excuse me, having, they're called bull bouts, where the bus would actually stop in lane, which makes it easier for the bus to, to load people and, and move on. So those would be the types of things that we'd be talking about. At the, at the far end of the scale would be things like bus-only lanes, which there are a number of hurdles that we'd have to go over before we'd be doing things like that. But there's, that's in terms of the spectrum of, of priority that you might make in a roadway. Everything from transit signal priority, queue jumps, which is, all things that are targeted at getting buses through intersections faster, to transit-only lanes would be, or HOV lanes would be at the other end of the scale.
Awesome. I, I'm a big believer in this. I, I, I think that as we grow as a community, I, I think the different types of transportation methods are important, not, not, not just for those who don't have vehicles.
Right.
You know, my, I, for example, my father-in-law, who lives in South Salt Lake, in, in a city called Riverton. And every day, that's pretty far south, almost to Draper, but on the other side of the freeway, but he works right next to the University of Utah. And he, and he hops on their transit system, their light rail, and goes to work every day and comes back home. And it's full. And, and he has multiple vehicles and is very capable of driving to work every day, but chooses to do so because it's, because of the convenience and because of, you know, the, the, the amount of money that he's saving. And so I think it's just almost, you know, more community outreach, continuing this discussion, and helping people understand and changing their mindset, you know, on a Friday night going to the Village, or a Friday night going downtown for a ballgame, instead of jumping in your own car, take the bus.
Yeah.
You know, not because I don't have a car, but because in some cases, I think it's the right thing to do, you know, to, to get vehicles off the road, especially with the type of congestion that we're facing today. So thank you for your presentation and good luck. And if anything I can do, let me know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Just another couple of questions for you, Stephen. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But talk to me, Ian, talk to counsel a little bit about the thought process behind the goals that are annotated on this postcard. And, and the reason why I ask is that, while I think better use of our limited roadway is important, I think you ask most people, they would believe that their neighbor should take the bus and not drive on the freeway. I think when you look at the, the cost savings that is, is annotated there as well, those aren't real dollars that most people take into account. It's almost like with a, with a bond, and it, it gets added to your house payment, and you don't think about the dollars that you're spending every month or every year to contribute to that. It's not real dollars. And I'm just curious about, kind of taking that into account, where the goals came from, because quite frankly, I think that we're missing goals, and, and how are we making it, you know, better or more convenient for our citizens? You know, why, to, to Mr. Burnt's point, his father-in-law probably takes the light rail because it saves him time on his commute. It, it, it helps, it's a benefit. And sure, it's less cars on the roadway, but that's not the reason why he chooses it. And yes, it maybe saves him money, but that's not why he chooses it. So can you just share with us where the, the goal process? Because I, I think that's a critical piece that's missing. And, and you, you see it addressed somewhat in the plan, but I just, I don't see it as being an overall major goal of kind of this new approach from VRT.
Thanks. So there are a couple of different ways that we've tried to approach and communicate the message. To, to bodies such as councils, we tend to focus, most city councils, we tend to focus a lot on kind of the public benefit and, and the planning connection between transit and, and economic development, for example. That's not really what, what most residents are going to get super excited about. And so what, what drove kind of the development of these goals and the purpose of the plan is better communicated, I think, with the title of the plan, which is the freedom to move and connecting more people more places more often. And so really what we're, so coming back to the comments that you made about your father in, in Salt Lake, the, the premise is relatively simple. It's if we can connect more people to more places more often, then it, then the choice to make transit is easy. You don't have to do a whole lot of arm twisting to get somebody to, to choose to take transit. Because the ways that we experience the frustrations of our existing kind of transportation paradigm is that as I, as I grow up, if I get a job, I get a car to go to my, my job. My spouse, maybe she has a job, she has a car to go to her job. We have kids. They have activities after school. I need to take them to, to their activities after school. They go to high school. They get a car so they can go to high school. I want to go see a game. I take my car to that, right? So every single trip, every single thing that I try to do requires me to, to use a car to do that, right? And, and that requires my time in terms of just driving, the, driving, requires my money in terms of gas. It requires, so in, in that time question, it's not just the time that I am driving, it's not just the time that I'm in transit, it's the time that I can't be doing other things even while I'm in transit, right? And so transit in the sense of in motion, not necessarily in transit. Because if you were in transit, then you could be doing other things than, than focusing on the, on the roadway. And so those are, and then, as my parents age and no longer can drive, it's either myself who's gotta figure out how to get them where they need to go, the, the church community that I'm part of, make sure that they have opportunities to get to the doctor. So all of those are, the, the stresses that we face with a, a scenario that doesn't provide transportation options. And so when we provide more, when we come back to this concept of, all we're trying to do is grow this, from what can I get to on transit right now, to many more places, the, the choice is eas, the choice becomes relatively easy. Certainly, there's a lot we can do in terms of helping, helping people see the value of transit, do much more marketing. But when it comes down to what's gonna make somebody choose to do it, is the fact that it's, it's convenient. And it helps them live their life in a way that, that is what they want to do. So whether that's getting to school, or whether that's getting to, to work, or to see their, their family. That's the core of what we're trying to do with this plan. And this is the best way that, that we've come across to illustrate that. The, the goals though, end up manifesting themselves in these weird things like average number of jobs you can access in thirty minutes, right? And nobody, nobody here cares about that. They just want to know, can I get to my job, right?
Right.
And so the way we look at measuring that is simply, more is better. And if we can get more people, more places more often, that's what we're doing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very engaging, and, and I appreciate the information. My questions are more logistical, and I, I've never really lived anywhere where there was public transit, so forgive me if my, for my ignorance. But in a suburban layout, the way we are, for the most part, if I want to go from my house to the Village, I have to drive to Fairview and wait for a bus, it'd be easier to drive to the Village, first of all. And if we, everybody wants to drive, go to, ride the bus to Micron, say, because that would be save, a time saver, where do they park?
Right.
I mean, you, because, because we're all several miles away, riding a bike isn't really realistic, especially in the winter. So they're gonna have to get in a car, and they're gonna have to put the car somewhere. So how does that work?
So part of what Valley Connect is proposing to do is build larger parking rides and, and have those be one of the assets that, that help people use the transit services to connect to more distant locations. But there, there also will be a focus on bicycle and pedestrian improvements to make it easier for people to walk to and from their house to, to the bus stop. But it does come down to helping extend the reach of that network to, to more households, so that, so that you, to the extent that you can, limit the, the requirement of driving your car to the bus stop itself, right? Because by far, the most efficient way of getting transit to serve more people is by getting people to walk to the bus stop. So, so that is part of what we will be doing, both in terms, so when, when development plans go to, to Compass and VRT looks at them as well, we're always looking for, how can we make pathways from this development out to the roadway to make it easier for people to, to get to the bus stop? Those, those are really important things that we, that we do over time to try and make sure that that infrastructure is in place. But other than that, then yes, you'd be defaulting to park and rides, which we need to be thinking about in, if, if they're going to be a significant part of the network, we need to think about them in greater, with greater emphasis than we have in the past. A one-hundred stall parking, stall parking garage, or parking facility park and ride is like a hundred and twenty people, right? So that's not, that's not a huge dent in the, the amount of traffic that's going up and down I-84, for example. So we should be thinking in terms of several thousand stall, or a thousand or, or two thousand stall parking garage. So that's, that's a significant thing, right? That's not something you're just gonna shoo in somewhere, shoehorn into, into someplace. So those are the types of conversations that we'll be looking at as we think about growing the transit network. But most importantly, I think, is ensuring that we have options that allow people to, to walk and bike to transit. And then looking at ways to leverage existing or, and upcoming technology to make those first and last mile connections in ways that, that we, that we don't right now.
Anything further from counsel? Thank you, Stephen, for the information.
Yes.
Okay, our next item, I, I'll turn this over to Caleb.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am actually just going to stall. I pull up a presentation that Erica Bowen with ITD is actually gonna follow up with you. ITD was here about a month ago and laid out some, an initial plan for some improvements on State Highway sixty-nine, including some access management near the intersection of Overland Road. And she's here to follow up on some of the concerns that were brought up from that previous meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as Caleb said, I'm Erica Bowen. I'm with the Idaho Transportation Department. I am District Three's Traffic Engineer. Last month, ITD presented the improvements associated with the State Highway sixty-nine Cuna to Meridian project to you. And you did have some questions about traffic and safety. And so that's what this presentation's here today, is just to address those questions that you had. So just to remind you, you asked two very specific questions. The first one being, are there currently southbound left turn crashes into the business access that will be affected by the median barrier down Meridian Road? The second one is, how does the median barrier improve safety? And is there crash data to support this? And so the access in question is on the east side of Meridian Road. I don't know, it's right in this area here. So first, what I really wanted to discuss is to let you know that ITD did not in, do- So first, what I really wanted to discuss is to let you know that ITD did not decide to install a median barrier based on the existing crash statistics. It was a decision that we made for the future safety and mobility of motorists traveling in both the north and southbound direction on Meridian Road. So you want to know, how many crashes have we had here now? In the last five years, only three. Only three southbound left turn crashes into this business. That's amazing. That is a really good number. What that's telling us is the configuration of the intersection as it exists today is functioning very successfully. And so to go into details of why it's functioning successfully, I just want to describe it a little bit. And the image on the right side is northbound. On the left side of the screen is your southbound, the image got rotated. So as you are traveling southbound on Meridian Road today, you have a center turn lane. And this is your center refuge. So as a vehicle trying to get into those businesses, you're going to pull into the center and you're going to sit there and you're going to wait. And you're going to find that appropriate gap that you're not going to experience a crash or anything like that. So while you're sitting there in this refuge, you have currently three lanes of traffic, three conflict points that you need to be observing. It's two through lanes on northbound Meridian Road and then it's the additional right turn only lane going into that business. So like I said, crashes, three in the last five years, those are numbers we like to see. So before going into what does the future configuration look like, I want to talk about the Overland and Meridian intersection itself and the lane changes that are occurring. So the State Highway 69 Cunito-Meridian project is improving this intersection by providing three northbound through lanes through the Overland intersection. It'll provide for a dedicated right turn lane at Overland and Meridian. That in itself is really critical. If you stand there at the intersection today, you'll always notice there's that one person in the right turn lane who's trying to travel northbound and it's blocking the flow of traffic. And so being able to get a dedicated right turn lane will dramatically increase traffic flow through this intersection as well as help with reducing some of the rear end crashes that we're seeing. To be able to get to this type of lane configuration, there is not space out there to actually add pavement. And so what we had to do is think creatively and innovatively. Currently today, there's two northbound left turn lanes. As you'll see in this image, in the future, there'll only be one. Today, there's about 100 vehicles turning, making the left turn, northbound left turn in the PM peak. It's a little bit less in the AM peak. One lane of traffic, or one left turn lane can serve upwards of about 250 left turns an hour. So we modeled this, we looked at the analysis and said, there is a lot of capacity, excess capacity in the dual lefts. We don't need that. The one left can serve all the traffic needs. And so by taking that second left turn, as well as the center refuge, we are able to now install, coming this summer, the three through lanes and then the one dedicated right turn lane. As I said, this new configuration not only improves congestion, it improves the traffic flow, but we are anticipating that it's going to reduce crashes in this as well. I looked at the, so ITD analyzes every intersection within the state and then particularly within our own district areas. And so for District 3, this area, Overland and Meridian, last year, well, in 2015, was ranked 30th as high accident locations. And so when we look at these intersections and rank them, we look at both severity of crashes. So was it a fatality, was it a serious injury, was it property damage? As well as the frequency of those crashes. So in 2015, it ranked 30th. In 2016, it jumped up to 9th. And so there is an enormous amount of rear ends and side swipes from each approach leg. It's not just the northbound leg that we're trying to address. But in looking at this new lane configuration, we do anticipate a reduction in the rear end and the side swipe crashes that we're experiencing on these. So for us, this was a great addition to this project. It's not going to improve all of the congestion in this area. There's some greater needs that we need to look at for the interchange, but this is an interim step that's going to help your community in this intersection. So that is what we were doing with some of that space, that left turn lane in the center refuge. So I want to go back and let you see what does the future business access look like with these conditions to make the improvements at Overland and Meridian. So you see a median barrier here, but let's imagine there's not a median barrier. So if you were traveling southbound on Meridian Road and you now wanted to make in the future a left into that business access, first of all, there's no center refuge. So you're going to block traffic behind you in one of the southbound lanes. When you block traffic behind you, I don't know if you've ever experienced it yourself, because when you make lefts, you don't always have the center refuge. You often will start making riskier decisions for that turning movement because you're blocking traffic. The people behind you might be honking as well. And so now you're really getting a little bit tenser and you're trying to find a gap so that you can clear yourself out of the roadway. Now, as you're stopping traffic, you have to actually observe five different conflict points. And so those are indicated by these red lines. So you're at the very start of a taper for the one single left turn lane. You can see that there are three through lanes now headed northbound. And in addition, instead of just a dedicated right turn lane, we now have a through lane, right turn lane. That in and of itself causes a little bit of additional conflict because often, you don't know if the driver, when they turn on that right turn blinker, do they really anticipate to make the right at the business access? Or did they just put the blinker on well in advance and they truly mean to make the right at Overland? So there is a lot of action going on right here. There's a lot of conflicts going on right here. And so again, like I said, the intersection as it's configured today, very safe, very impressed by that. The intersection, as it will be configured in the future to make Overland and Meridian function better, it's not a safe intersection. And so that was our driving factor with this. There's just too many decision points for a driver to make. And we would anticipate with this kind of lane configuration, if you don't have the median barrier there, it will increase crashes. And that's not something we want to see for your community. So increased crashes by how much? Because you did ask for crash data. So the closest example that I was able to come up with is a comparison of Eagle Road and Village Drive. As you know, we've closed off this left-in back in 2016, but I wanted to show you the data that was associated with it. So if you look at this intersection configuration, it's actually safer than the one that we will be striping in coming this summer for Overland and Meridian at that business one. In this configuration, you have a southbound left turn lane and it has a refuge for you. You're not stopping traffic in the southbound Eagle Road through traffic. When you're pausing there and trying to assess your gap, you have three northbound through lanes that you have to look for, for conflict points, and then the dedicated right turn lane as well. So less conflict movements, four as opposed to five. When this intersection was installed and the village was opened in 2013, we immediately saw some left turn crashes. And that's what the chart at the top shows. And these shows the total angle crashes, so T-bone crashes. In 2013, it was five, and then by 2016, it jumped up to 17. You'll notice that the injuries also increased as well. I was trying to put a comparison out there, so I took some values for the economic cost of crashes per crash instance. And you can see that that value was going up as well. That in 2016, those 17 crashes related to almost $2 million in expenses incurred by citizens of Idaho due to medical bills or loss of time at work, things of that nature. So in addition to those total angle crashes, I wanted to document your secondary crashes that you would experience as well. So when this was opened, ITD received an enormous amount of phone calls from drivers stating they had to slam on their brakes, that the guy shot in front of them making the left-hand turn and they slammed on their brakes. And so there was concern for that. So these rear end crashes are all those secondary crashes where the first guy did slam on his brakes. Unfortunately, the driver behind him headed northbound wasn't paying attention or didn't have enough space to slam on his brakes as well and resulted in rear end crashes. So in addition to the 17 total angle crashes that we saw in 2016, there was an extra 10 rear end crashes where the turning vehicle made it through but resulted in others crashing. So this is the type of crashes and severity that we would anticipate with this new configuration. And so looking at this was really the justification that we saw as a department, that we absolutely had to put that median barrier in. So what does that mean for the businesses? Because we certainly want to make sure that we're not hurting any economic opportunities of themselves to thrive. And people have their destinations that they like to get to. So what does that mean? With the barrier, yes, we do restrict the left-ins for that one business access. But there are other access points and very safe access points for drivers to get to. Clay handed out this little handout here. This is something that ITD has created as part of our project. With our public involvement specialists, they will be going out to all the businesses in the quadrants around this intersection and giving them these brochures to pass out to their customers. And these brochures explain why we're doing not just the median barrier, but the whole State Highway 69 Cunito-Meridian project, but shows where there are routes for them to get to. So say you're headed southbound on Meridian Road and typically go past Overland and make the left. You've got two other options to look at. One is you make the left on Overland and you safely make the right in at that first access point to get into those businesses. Otherwise, you'd head through the intersection of Overland and head all the way down to Calderwood. At Calderwood, at the bottom of this screen, you'll note that there is a refuge there for you to pull in, pause, and then safely make that left-hand turn onto Calderwood. And then do a little bit of backtracking on a baggage road, but you still have access to those businesses. And so like I said, we have a public involvement specialist and group who's going out to these businesses. We would be happy to provide additional handouts, posters, things of that nature, to those businesses so they can share with their customers. We also have this information on ITD's website, too, under our project, so that individuals know what to anticipate coming up this summer. And again, what to expect, construction is currently scheduled for the summer and fall of 2018. We'll provide the business owners these handouts so they can pass out to their customers. And really, we just want to emphasize that the entire project is looking to improve safety and traffic operations on this really busy and growing corridor. The median barrier is just a byproduct of trying to make improvements at Overland and Meridian so we can improve the safety and congestion there. We might be limiting some of the turning movements from that one business access, but we're certainly not removing any access points. And we are trying to be very proactive in drivers knowing how they can get to their favorite destinations on that southeast corner. With that, I'll stand for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Erica. Mr. Palmer.
Not a question, but a comment. After our meeting, I frequent Red Pavilion and Papa John's. I know it's hard to believe, given my amazing physique, but I do go there often. Usually, I'm coming northbound, though, as I live south of the area here. But the other day, I happened to be going there, going southbound, so it's like, I'm going to try this. So I went in through Calderwood and it really was a piece of cake to be able to just come in behind them, back in through there. And to me, this is a different situation than the Village situation. I had a harder time with the Village and look forward to hopefully that opening up in a different scenario. But here, this was easy. And we have, in this situation, we have this amazing piece of infrastructure that is in the Meridian overpass that I feel like as we continue to pile people south of Overland Road is going to be majorly underutilized because we're squishing traffic into the two lanes when there's three going over. So I think that right here, south of Overland, three lanes to pass through that intersection is necessary. And where there's no more room for concrete, the only way this is possible is to do it this way. I think it makes sense and really appreciate you coming back and explaining more and especially your outreach with the businesses to be able to provide the materials to help give their customers a heads up and a way to know, you can get to us, just go around.
Thank you. Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Erica, thank you so much for coming back. And I was just curious, I think Brandon was with you last time and I know, I think he was headed out to some of the businesses the following Thursday. And I was just curious if there was any preliminary feedback. And I do appreciate the materials and things and the communication with the businesses, but I was just curious if you had any feedback as of now.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Little Roberts, I believe that ITD held off on going to those businesses. I'll have to double check with Brandon. I haven't heard any feedback, but I believe that we were waiting for, to be able to present to yourselves, get any comment or concerns that you had so that we can incorporate that back into the businesses. We didn't want to preemptively reach out to them. But I certainly can double check. And if Brandon has gone out, I'll be sure to make sure he gets in contact with Caleb so that can be passed on to the city council.
Thank you.
Follow-up? Madam Mayor, Erica. I think the sooner the information can get out to the businesses, the better off and the more proactive they can be with their customers prior to construction. And we will be in summer of '18 before we blink practically. So I think the more information out sooner will help them be proactive, but thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Yes, I'm a little bit confused. Because I thought you were coming, the whole point of you coming back to report to us was to be after the businesses were spoken to. So I still would like to hear the feedback from the businesses. That was the whole point of this follow-up presentation, as far as I remember. And I could be wrong, I could be missing something. And I understand, looking at this, that with this configuration, you have to have the median. You can't have people stopping on a highway with moving traffic. So you would either have to reduce it down to two lanes and then a turn lane on each side, and then a refuge lane in the middle, or you have to have the median barrier. I mean, I still think there are two options. I don't know what your traffic flow would be with only two through lanes, but I really wanted to get here the feedback from the businesses in that area. Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Burnt.
I just have to look at you now, I just look over and you know I want to talk, it's perfect. Just curiosity question. In these scenarios with traffic going southbound, wanting to take that left into the businesses, do you guys have problems with U-turns? People just not, you know, going an extra 50 yards to take that left into that refuge? You know, you anticipate U-turns when you make medians in the middle of the road?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, we often do anticipate individuals taking U-turns. So it will be signed, no U-turns. We've done the turning movement analysis, except for very small vehicles. And most of Idahohans don't drive very small vehicles. You're not going to successfully be able to navigate to make a U-turn headed northbound through Overland and Meridian intersection, as well as at Calderwood. I know I've done it myself on Eagle Road, trying to make a U-turn where U-turns are permitted. I drive an extended F-350, it's massive. I hit the shoulder and I'll never make a U-turn again. So there might be some of that when it's initially constructed, where an individual might try to attempt a U-turn. I don't think they'll do it twice, but we are going to sign it because we can't validate it with analysis.
Like five times, like no U-turn, no U-turn, no U-turn?
We might have to do something, yes.
I think it's going to happen a lot personally. To echo what Councilmember Mylum had said, you know, we need, I really would like to know what the feedback is from those businesses. Sooner the better for this body. I would think that most anyone, everyone at P would agree with that. And you know, listening to what Councilmember Palmer had said, you might want to just take him, you know? He'll probably be a strong advocate for it, right? Sure? I think it's important to talk to the businesses, like...
Madam Mayor, we would be happy to come back next month and give you feedback on the conversations and the concerns that the businesses may have. If Councilmember Palmer would like to come with us, we'd be more than happy to bring him along as well. You know, having the support of your city council and seeing how the median barriers needed to look at overall flow, you know, that's something that we would love to partner with you when we're going out there and talking with them. I know that our Public Involvement Committee is very anxious to speak with them. Like I said, I didn't believe they had gone out this last month, I could be wrong. But we would be more than willing and happy to come back next month and give you feedback on what we've seen.
That's good, thank you. Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
All right, I don't want the blame if they don't like it. But I do have a question after the discussion about the U-turn. So, in the drawing, it appears that the median barrier stops and that there's a break between that and the left-turn yellow line. Is it anticipated that U-turns would be appropriate just past the barrier, but not quite to the Calderwood intersection? Would the barrier actually go all the way to Calderwood?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer. So, the reason that there is a break in the barrier is that we wanted to be able to allow the left-ins, northbound left-ins at Davenport. And so, that's why we weren't taking it all the way to Calderwood. So, you use some of that center refuge, also as a refuge to get into Davenport. We're going to have to look at how would you appropriately sign, because there's not a median barrier to put up that sign right there at Calderwood. But it's still, it's very similar to the same configuration at Overland and Meridian Road, where it would be difficult for most vehicles to make the U-turn. So, that's, it's something that we're looking at internally of how to sign that one.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Not so much a question, just more of a comment. I think you've heard from a couple of councilmembers about our desire to hear from the business community. If your team has already went out and can compile some analysis for us that would necessitate you having to come back a third time, to me, I think, I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but that would seem more appropriate. If they haven't, that's obviously, I think, at least this council was led to believe that's what was going to happen. And so, being able to hear from whoever on your public information team as to what has occurred from that. You're not really seeking any feedback from council, this is more of an FYI. And so, there's not much action. If the whole business community is opposed to it, there's not going to really change anything. But I think at least for us to be able to be aware of what was discussed with them would be beneficial.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I agree, this is similar to one of the questions I asked before of whether or not ITD's asking us or telling us. And it sounds like we're being told, and I appreciate that. But it's not a matter of a decision not yet being made. So, with that, if a request for future events like this, if there's, one of your slides had the economic cost that is associated with access being open, it would be, if that's to be something to be relied upon to support closing and access, it would be helpful data to net that against the economic cost of closing access to the business community and net those out. If we're to consider one, we should consider both, assuming that the economic cost is a relevant criteria to decide whether or not to close or open access. Maybe not so much here, but I know the Village one that was discussed. You showed what appeared to be costs that might be saved by closing the access. But it would be very interesting to know how that nets against the economic loss that was created by the access closure. That might be for the next discussion.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton. I don't know if ITD has ever done an analysis of what the economic cost of closing and access to a business or restricting turning movements. I certainly don't have that information for Village Drive either. It's, it would be something greater that we would have to do with businesses. And I'm not even sure where to start on that one. But it is a good point of looking at it both ways. But I don't think anyone at ITD has attempted to look at it from that perspective. I was only putting costs on there to put into perspective that towards '15 and '16 at Village Drive, the severity was increasing. And so, economic cost of crashes for fatalities or serious injuries is much greater in costs. Fatalities are in the millions, property damage is about $1,100. So, it's order of magnitudes is what I was trying to portray in that, more so than just the cost.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming back and the good information that you brought with you. We do look forward to hearing what kind of feedback that you get from the businesses.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And our department reports, we'll start with Resolution 18-2063. Mr. Baird.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have before you a resolution which is ratifying the work that was performed to repair Eagle Road with the recent sewer, or water break, was it water?
Water main break?
Yes. The state law, emergency laws allow us to go out and secure the contractor immediately and then, you know, without having to seek bids. And then, you can review and ratify that decision to get them paid. That's basically what's in front of you. We do have some representatives from Public Works. If you have any questions about the cost, the receipts are included with the resolution. So, with that background, I'll just leave it open for questions and your motion with regard to the resolution.
Thank you, Ted. I think that we got an update on this that provided you with a lot of those details. Is there anything further or any further questions regarding this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve Resolution Number 18-2063.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve Item 8A. There's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, Mr. Kerry. Thank you, and thank you for joining us. Item 8B is under the annual department update for the mayor's office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm not going to try to shortchange this, but I will try to do my best to expedite this process because you're not going to hear from me, but you're going to hear from Casey next and then the strategic plan after that. So, we'll try to move through this. This is our illustrious mayor, as you are aware. But just a reminder, she is CEO of the city and has nine direct reports from the directors to myself in the office. This is always good to get an update on the mission, vision, and values. And while I put the Meridian Way in there, that does represent the care values and that is what we are all about in the city of Meridian. But just as a reminder of our Meridian vision and values. So, oh, I didn't realize that we had a, this may not work, but we're going to try. In the mayor's office, we are focused on three elements. We have our youth component, economic development, and our community partners working with people in the community to, from ribbon cuttings and other aspects that they expect of our elected officials, a lot of our focus. But we're focused on being built for business and designed for living through that process. This is the updated mayor's office communications, other government. That's who you're going to hear from today. Just a refresher, we had three new folks that started in last year. And I'd like to say that we did a great job this last year getting them all up to speed. And I think Morgan's been drinking from a fire hose all year with the constituents, as have many of you are, and we'll touch on that here in a little bit. But we also brought on Vincent Koontz, who you'll be hearing from in a little bit, about the strategic plan. He's been on for about three months, getting things best organized as he can during that timeframe. And then, this last year, we also were without our communications manager for about three months while she was out on FMLA. And I just want to take a moment to give accolades to the entire group here because, you know, they were filling in, we all took our parts, filling in. When you have a small group that does what we do and we stay focused, you know, we had one person doing social media on Facebook and Twitter. I was handling many inquiries. Morgan was doing a lot of the Facebook stuff, she was creating the newsletters. Jody was handling the Nextdoor, you know, IT, Catherine in IT was doing all the website updates that Casey would normally do on the hot list and stuff. So, it was really a team effort to try to get through the year with those three months with Casey being out. And the only thing, one other thing I wanted to, a little-known fact about Vincent, since he is the new person this year, is he interned the city several years ago. And it was through his internship that he did when he's in at BSU doing his master's program that really helped develop the Meridian Way. So, that's a little-known thing from way back when, where it's coming around full circle. So, these are just a couple of the accolades that we received this last year, a couple of the larger ones. You know, it's always nice to receive the 100 best places for the fifth time for Meridian. I haven't gone back and double-checked recently, but we have, I believe that Meridian has been on this list more than any other community since the time that we've been tracking over the last 10 years. Maybe that will be a summer project to go verify that statement. But five times over the last 11 years is not bad at all. And then, here are some of the other accolades the city received during this last year. 24/7 Wall Street, USA Today. You know, we've been seeing ourselves as a community on that list regularly. I also like to highlight some of the recognitions that the mayor got this last year. For those that were at AIC, her Harold Hurst Award, you know, overall giving back to the association through her involvement here. And she was just one of the nominees for Idaho Women of the Year and was out with a couple of the staff and a couple of other people, I think, up here on the dais last week as part of that process. So, it's a congratulations to everybody in the city, not just the mayor's office, the police department, the parks department. All of them are helping contribute to these accolades that we're receiving day in, day out. As I mentioned, our focus is really in the community, youth, economic development. These are the programs and activities that we perform day in and day out in the mayor's office. The little Y, C, E, D kind of gives you an overview about what those elements are. We do try to stay current and review what we're doing each year. And I do have one sad thing to report, the mayor and CEO's Kids Book Club. You know, that was one of the, when I first started here at the city many years ago, one of the first things I was, found out about was that program. And we are actually in the last session of doing that program after 11 years. It's been a great run, but like everything, when you look at your time and your energy and resources, the outcomes you receive from that is going to come to an end after this session. But we've had a lot of great sponsors over the years who've helped make that possible. And it's been a great opportunity for everybody. Right now, just, you know, Jody's not here, she's at MIAC in National League, NLC DC with our MIAC youth. So, they are learning about stuff and hopefully bringing back some great stuff from that opportunity. And we've also kicked off Walking Club already. And, you know, the cool thing about Walking Club is not only do we have all the public schools that are participating, but we also have private charter schools, homeschool groups that are coming out and walking through those processes. So, that's really where we put a lot of energy and focus in trying to make that. And each school, the nice part, they take portions of it and make it their own. Not everyone likes that it does all the elements, some do it separately. But we're getting everybody out walking, and it's a great, a great program. One thing, you should have received an invitation about this, but April is Volunteer Appreciation Month. So, we are working on putting together an event for our volunteers here at the city. We're going to be doing a lunch, whichever one here is invited to come and participate and congratulate our volunteers on that. So, these are just examples of some of the things that we're currently, right now, doing. But this is a list of what we continuously do in the mayor's office. And of course, we couldn't do it without our sponsors and our partners. So, these are all the companies that help sponsor the programs, activities that we did in the mayor's office over the last year for State of the City, C-1 Kids Book Club, Walking Club, Do the Right, Faith Leaders Luncheon, Truck or Treat, Youth Safety Summit. I did just want to specifically highlight one of these right now, Idaho Central Credit Union, way down there in the corner. But they are sponsoring the, this year, the Do the Right, the Mayor's Walking Club, and MIAC, primary title sponsor for all those three events. It's a huge investment that they have made in the programs and activities that we're doing in the mayor's office and through the city. So, if you see Clint or one of their representatives, I'd encourage you to thank them because it is a huge investment. So, this is just a quick by-the-numbers about some of the things we did. Of course, you just saw another proclamation today. We stay busy with the commission appointments, the changes the city council put into place through that conversation about opening up all the commissions so that we have an opportunity for other members of the community to submit. And that does keep us busy in getting fresh people in, looking at it at all times. But the thing I really wanted to highlight right here, cases. So, that is the number of constituent contacts from this last year. The cases is the number of cases. That's how many individual issues that we open up in the mayor's office for a constituent reaching out and saying, I would like help, I'd like a response, here's something that happened, here's an email or a letter. The contacts, you know, five of those cases had roughly 1,500 communications for Linder Village, Costco, that's where you see that. And all those are being put into those systems and tracked, so that's quite a few. This does not include necessarily petitions. You know, on occasion, we've seen petitions come through. So, I didn't have, I didn't go back and pull the numbers on some of the petitions, but I'll give you an example of where things are in that. And that's been a huge time issue during this last year. So, moving on, just an overview of the strategic plan objectives, the five that we had active during this last year. I'm not going to speak to these at this point in time, other than, you know, we spoke quite a bit about 3A2 last October regarding citizen access. Casey's going to be talking about one of these that's been closed out. We're going to continue to work on the other four during this next year, continue to work the plan in 2018. But we're seeing, we're seeing activity and action in all of these, you know, from the downtown lowdown, that April's working on for vibrant downtown entertainment options and getting that out into the Meridian Press, to Nextdoor and other elements as it relates to improving citizen access, the government streaming the commission meetings. So, we continue to work the strategic plan action items. This is just a quick list of some of the accomplishments outside of our normal day-to-day activities. And the Citizens Satisfaction Survey, getting that completed in 2017, that's always an undertaking, but something I actually really enjoy through that process. Chindon Boulevard, I just have that on here because of the work that we did to reach out to the community to get comments on the ITIP. 344 out of 437 comments that they received for the ITIP were related to Chindon Boulevard. So, we're engaging the community and getting them active in helping support the need for that road improvement. The Meridian Downtown Business Association, we've been working with them. And as I mentioned about the downtown lowdown that April is doing, helping promote their events and activities through the Meridian Press. And then, the other thing on here, the Leadership Development Program. You know, I've been working with HR and FIRE and to create this program that gives our employees an opportunity to go and hear from others, expand their knowledge and, you know, emerging leaders here in the city. And it's a nice team effort, does take my time helping work on that project. Beginning is something I've enjoyed doing. Just a couple of goals for this next year. We'll, strategic plan, performance management. You know, you're going to get an update on the strategic plan here shortly. There's other aspects than not just managing the plan. But as I mentioned, Vincent's only been here a few months, but we will continue to get further into some of his responsibilities and actions regarding performance management, change management, some of those activities. We'll continue to work the strategic plan objectives that we are assigned to our office. Peak Academy Change Innovation Training, we're actually doing that next week. So, again, that's something that's been in process for about eight months. And we finally have that, three days of training coming up, where we'll have 20 staff engaged. I understand the city council hasn't been able to participate, but if you're in the area and you've got a few hours and you want to stop in, we'll be over at the Public Safety Training Center on Monday and Tuesday. So, come and pop your head in if you're interested. City 101. So, this is something that you probably haven't heard about. But we have put together, working with the departments, an opportunity for some people to come and learn a little bit more about individual departments. So, we have three classes that we've put together, starting in March, April, and May, where we've invited some of our volunteers, the people that have gone through our Public Safety Training Academy, Neighborhood Night, or NNO people, Neighborhood Watch people, to come and learn a little bit more. So, we're kind of doing a pilot program, we'll see how that works. And perhaps it's something that we open up and continue to do if we find that we get good feedback from the participants in that. And then, I haven't even spoken to the mayor about this one, so this is a little education for her. But I think we want to try to do a middle-school-focused event. And we've always been focused a lot on the elementary, and we have the high school. Due to our sponsorship that we receive from ICCU, I think we have some funds that we could probably put to a middle-school activity that Jody's been talking to me about. And we'll be hopefully doing something with that in this upcoming, in this budget year, but within the next. within the next nine months. So speaking of budget, as normal, just want to make you aware that you'll be seeing me in the next month or so, bringing forward budget amendments for all those sponsorship dollars. They're not put into our base budget, so I need to come forward to get spending authorization based upon the sponsorships that we've received. So there will be four budget amendments for that. And then looking forward for FY19 enhancements, we're currently exploring two, and they are related to the strategic, actually, I'm 3A1 that we discussed, looking at doing video testimony and conversations with IT. We will have to do some modifications to our system if we are going to do that. We still need to find the best, the best option to do video testimony, but we are still going to explore that, so that would be a potential enhancement this next year. And then we're also going to have conversations about City Mobile App. Those are actually going to be occurring over the next several weeks. So we haven't gotten too far into it, but we have at least put that on the radar to begin having those conversations. And with that, I will stand for any questions you may have, and then when I'm done, you'll see Casey.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Cavner.
Maybe a question, or maybe more just a future update. I don't know, for you, Metamare, for Robert, just an update about what's going on with the Corps? Saw that listed as a bullet item, and I guess I thought they weren't even in existence anymore. So getting an update as to the things that they're doing and our involvement would be awesome to hear.
Okay, they did dissolve over this last year, but there was still involvement up until that point. And we can include that in Brenda's update at some point.
As with last year.
Yeah, this was last year. So, any other questions? Yes, Jen.
Well, I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry, Miss Milam.
Robert, it was a great report. You guys have been really busy and, yeah, good job with filling in for Casey and all that you guys have done. You've got a great team up there. So kudos to the hiring team as well.
Thank you.
Metamare.
Mr. Cavner.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but I want to echo Counsel of Milam's comments. I think you have an exceptional staff who are available, accountable, really, I think, representing what we want in our community. They do a really great job, everybody in that office. Lot to be proud of for that team.
We are. Thank you. Mr. Burnt.
Robert, mayor, everyone, thank you so much. You know, I'm the new guy up here, and I jumped in with both feet, and I can't tell you how grateful I am for your staff, for you, and for all those who helped me get up to speed on everything Meridian. So thank you so much to everyone. I wanted to say that on the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anything further? Thank you, Robert. Hello, Casey.
Hi, mayor, members of council. Thanks for having me today. We're going to talk communications. We're going to communicate about communications. You see what I did there? All right, so first of all, let's go over our, the 2017, 2018 goals and actions. So you'll see I have my goal listed, and then I have the actions we took as a result of those, and we'll go over all of this in detail in the next few slides. So overall, though, goals, communication strategy, increase outreach, drone, and streamline processes. So the first one, communication strategy, I'm not going to go into very much right now because I'm going to be coming up and talking to you more on the one that we just completed. 3A1, we were to evaluate and define the objectives of and adapt new strategies to elevate participation in city activities. This was a great strategic initiative, and I'm really excited about what came out of this. So I'll talk to you more about that in the next presentation. But as a result, we do now have marketing best practices that we didn't have before. It's a checklist, and we have event evaluation forms that we did not have before. So that's really exciting. Just streamlines everything. I've also been working on 3A2, and that's identifying ways for increased engagement, and 3C3, crafting an emergency communications plan, which is something I'm actually working on this week. So let's talk about social media. We had, I had goals, and here's what we, where we ended in 2018. Actually, I just checked it, we're up to 7,095. So since I added this on Friday, we've added 20, you know, I'm a communications person, 18 more, yeah, almost 20. So our goal for 2018 is 9,000. The thing about Facebook is we're really hitting a certain demographic here. We're hitting a lot of our, the residents we want to, usually the age group is 30 to roughly 60 to 70 even. So that's the age group we're hitting with Facebook. It's an important demographic for us. And this is where you, I think this is just an important analytic because it just shows the different posts that we're posting and our average reach on each of those different posts. So you can see videos are still very popular. Our shared video was hugely involved, when it comes to engagement, our shared video, so anytime I shared a video from police or KTVB news story or whatnot, those got a huge reach, which is very interesting to me. But yeah, our videos are still very powerful. Our highest reach was on October 27th. That happened to be when we posted the Truck or Treat photo album. These are huge pictures like this because people want to see themselves in pictures, and so, and it also connects us with the community. So these events are so great, and anytime we can post these pictures and connect with citizens is awesome. Our average daily reach is up, it's up about 500. Average monthly reach is at 24,000, just over 24,000. And when it comes to videos, we had 88,000 video views in 2017. That's 29,800 minutes viewed. Once again, we're seeing that people don't want the volume on when they're looking at videos on Facebook. They're usually scrolling, sometimes during a meeting. I just always say that. But, you know, people are scrolling on their Facebooks, and we don't know when. Maybe they're at home, they're watching TV, they're scrolling. They'll stop and watch a video, but they won't actually hit it so that it brings the sound up. They'll just watch it on their timeline. So we've made adjustments because of that. Our This Week in Meridian video has all the text on it now, so that you can get all of the information without any sound. We actually just took away the voiceover, which I'll talk about later in my presentation as to what kind of a time savings we're seeing because of that. So these are our top video views. The Meridian Winter Lights Parade, this is where we had Santa on video inviting people to come to the parade, so that was really a lot of fun. The Duck Rescue with the Meridian Fire, and Meridian Fire's on there again with the duck lean rescue. That was a share video that we shared. St. Luke's got that video. So those are big ones. Do the Right Day, and Did You Hear What Happened? Why Mayor Tammy Was Late. So the video that started the Stay the City last year was one of our top videos this past year. So I didn't look to this year. The video that started the Stay the City this year, the one, the Rising Star one, it's getting a ton of views. We love that video. Just, we had a vision, and it turned out, so we love that. And we love the Why the Mayor Is Late to the Stay the City one as well. The minutes viewed, why this is interesting is just to show you that Keith Byrd's live video was our longest minutes viewed video, and it just shows you that those live videos, even if they go long, people will sit there and they will watch them. And also, people like real videos about real people, and so that was, that was interesting to me to see that. The other one was a Channel 6 live interview with Deputy Chief Pastor O'Chea, and then the duck lean rescue, Mayor's and Santa Invites You. All right, moving on to Twitter, we have 6,200, just shy of 6,300, and our goal is 7,000 for 2018. I don't put a ton of effort into Twitter just because my reach there is media and businesses, and we really are doing well with that reach. You only get so much time with social media, and you really have to pinpoint your different audiences where they are on social media. This is our highest tweeted, highest impression tweet was 70 Days Until Spring, in case anyone is keeping track. I posted a picture of a beautiful sunny day in Kleiner Park in the middle of Snowmageddon, and that got a ton of retweets and a lot of impressions. And an impression just means that it was delivered to that person's Twitter stream. Let's talk about YouTube now. We have had 30,648 views, 150,000 minutes of watch time. The average view duration is just under five minutes. Subscribers, 87 new for a total of 299 total. So we got a lot of new subscribers this past year, and I'm really going to be pushing that this year because when you're a subscriber, you get notifications, and we're going live, and now we're putting all of our commission meetings live. So those notifications are important. I know a couple of council members have, are subscribed to our channel, and so they get those notifications when we're live. And when we upload new videos, they get that. So you can see the top video views here. Unlimited Trash Week, that you see one of our This Week in Meridian videos made it to the top. That was Unlimited Trash Week, so I have to think that that's probably why that one wasn't really big. That's a popular week. Excuse me. Moving on to LinkedIn, we increased followers by 445, so that's, that was a good increase for us. We're at 998. We're going to, our goal is to do another big increase and hopefully get 2,000 followers. We post our job openings on LinkedIn, and we post any relevant events like a town hall or coffee with the mayor on LinkedIn, and that's that community that we're reaching there. I don't bombard LinkedIn with all of our posts by any means because that's a very, you're getting a lot of people looking for business updates on LinkedIn. Nextdoor, it's my last social media, but really one that I focus a lot on. Nextdoor is really important to us because of that middle box right there. We have nearly 22,000 members' households on Nextdoor. That is our largest reach of any social media that we have. It is huge for us. We have utilized Nextdoor in so many more ways this year. We do notifications to specific neighborhoods ahead of their spring flushing, so they know that if their water is a little discolored, here's what you can do. So we're targeting that. CJ's team has been awesome at getting the posts for the public hearings on Nextdoor, and we have gotten great feedback on that. We are doing, we do a once a week This Week in Meridian or the newsletter. The one thing about the Nextdoor audience is they don't want too many posts. So we limit that. We do one for sure a week, maybe two or three. I never go above three because that's a lot. We also put events on Nextdoor because that's a great way to get that information out. So I'm a huge fan of Nextdoor and all that it offers to us. And I actually gave Nextdoor an idea that I think they're going to add to their platform that I think will be really helpful so that we can see what other agencies, not just in Meridian, but in Ada County and Boise and Eagle are posting. When we had Snowmageddon, we were kind of, we were all in our own silos, and no one could see what others were posting to the neighborhoods and Nextdoor. And so I have suggested an agency timeline that I love to see on Nextdoor, and I hope that comes to fruition this year. They're working on it, and they've been in contact with me. So on Instagram, our goal is 2,000. We added 783 in 2017. I do have an intern now, and she is fantastic. She's a communications major at Boise State University and is interning with me. Her main focus is Instagram and social media. She's helping with the strategic plan and research for me and any other communication programs. She helped me with the graphics manual update that I'm working on, and so she has been fantastic. And she is the age group that we're getting at on Instagram. So I have looked to her a lot to help us build our Instagram account. I've learned that Instagram users are really picky. That's what we're, in all my readings of Instagram. So not a lot of flyers, we're posting a lot of pictures, we're trying to get away from flyers on Instagram. But that really is a key audience that we didn't have, that we need to build, and I'm excited to build for us on Instagram. So increase outreach with more live streams, and we've done that. We've had a total of 71 YouTube live streams in 2017. That's up from, that's up to, our average viewers, this is a huge one, is up to 21 from 10. But let me tell you, that's when we're live. We get a lot more post views now, but that's huge. You know, that's more than double the amount of viewers while we're live. And that will only grow the more that people know that that's how they can watch city council and connect with the city. The average view duration, if you see that, it's 30 minutes. That's a long time. People are really engaging in our videos. Facebook live streams are at 12. That includes coffee with the mayor, town halls, ground breakings, and Walking Club. And then our most viewed livestream, as I mentioned, was Keith Byrd's retirement. So you can see some of our top viewed livestreams there. Those are the total views. And now we're doing even more live streams, of course, with the commission streams, and that, another big, you know, hats off to CJ and his team. They've added these extra steps to make us even more transparent and available to the citizens, and they've added them almost as if they weren't adding more work. They, I've never heard them complain or anything. They just, now they have a process, and they, they stream all the commission meetings, and I think that's huge. It just, it just gives our citizens more access to government, and that's wonderful. So great job CJ and team. Our averaged, we averaged over 100 views during the livestream on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March 1st. So I am talking about 2017, but I really wanted to talk about that because that was huge. People wanted to see that meeting, not all of them could attend, and we gave them a way to view that meeting that was already part of our process. We didn't do a special livestream. It was just, we livestream our commission meetings now, so it's an option for them. And so far, on March 7th, we had had 862 total views. So that tells you, we're offering something citizens want. So now on to Welcome to Meridian, and of course, let's see here. Immediately, we did send this out to, this, oh, this is a way, this Welcome to Meridian is a way to immediately welcome residents so that they know more about the city they live in. And we think it's really important because you never get a second chance to make a first impression, right? So we want that first impression to our new residents to be a good one. We are happy that they're here. Here's what it looks like in 2017. We sent nearly 4,000 in two rounds. The second round received the thumb drive, so that was just over 2,000. 1,800 received a postcard, and the reason we did that, we had way more new residents than we had budgeted for. So this gave us a way to see, okay, which one was more well-received, the thumb drive or the postcard? Both directed people to the website. Overall, our views on the website were less than 10%. So while that's not ideal, I still think it's an important program, and I think we need to find a different way that maybe we can get the information to people, but still drive them back to that website so that we can try and collect some analytics on it, and maybe even add an email to get people to come back to it. But we're looking at a magazine right now, so it'd be a combination of what we've sent out, a magazine with a QR code to that website, and then that website highlighted throughout. So when I say little, it's like a little magazine that we're thinking that we'd mail to people, and then it'd give them updates, and we'd update it with events, meet your elected officials, that sort of thing, so that they immediately feel connected to our The drone goal, yay! We launched the drone program in 2017. I was able to earn my certification after a month of studying. We worked with legal to establish policies for the city, which was really important. We put together a process that includes a copilot, also very important. April has served as my copilot. Sorry. And you can see Morgan down there, she is my copilot as well. I put a circle around us. So I, this year I do want to get vests. That's a big thing in the drone community now, is to wear your vest so that it says drone pilot, do not disturb, so that if you're out flying, people won't come up and ask you what you're doing. So we're, my goal for this year is to learn more ways to expand this So we're, my goal for this year is to learn more ways to expand this program. Drones offer a lot of technological capabilities that even I'm not aware of at this point. So we want to learn more about that and what we can do at the city, but I think it's been a great asset for us. I've had a lot of departments already request shots and video, so it's something that departments were really wanting, and now we can help, which is fantastic. This is my favorite thing to do, and people probably don't realize this, but I always like to streamline processes. I like to find a process, how can we make this easier and more streamlined, and how can we make it work better? So this is always my favorite goal, and I think I make this a goal every year just because I always think that you can do better. So I talked about Canva a little bit last year. I love Canva, the departments are loving Canva. It has really just bolstered our branding, it has brought us to a new level. We don't have a graphic designer for the city, so this makes us all look like graphic designers, and it really is a time savings. You can build a flyer, I can build one as quickly as 10 minutes if I need to, and then I can take it and resize it, and I can make it for Facebook, for social media. So you're not spending hours trying to put together marketing materials. It has really streamlined that process, and it is being used by all departments. Lumen Five is another one that I'm really, really excited about. Just brought this one on, in the new year. It's a video creation tool online. So for an example, we have a huge time savings now with This Week in Meridian. I added up the hours we were spending with my video production intern scripting it, and then sending me the script, me reviewing it, making the changes, him sitting down, maybe getting B-roll, and I had to, and then editing it, and then me giving him changes for editing, and then him making the changes, and then uploading to YouTube. So I added all that. It was about 10 hours to produce a week. Now we get this done in about 30 to 60 minutes with this new program online. So to me, for the amount of views, I feel like that was a really good step, and it has freed up our video production intern, who is also very awesome by the way, runs your council stream every Tuesday, does a great job. It's freed him up to do a lot of special projects for departments, and there was a waitlist. So now we're getting through that waitlist because he has a lot more hours to devote to that. Photo storage, this was something I would have people calling me saying, I need this photo, where is it? People needed photos, and there wasn't one shared area. So I put together a committee, figured out how we could streamline our photo organization. So now we have a photo storage on the public drive that all departments can access. We set up a process for how photos are organized, what photos are put in there, and how, the discretion you use on what photos should go in there. And so that process was laid out, and this saves a lot of time and resources. I was amazed at all the photos we have, once we got them all put together. And MailChimp, we added news releases in order to track engagement. I love this because now I can see how many times our news releases are open, just like I could on the newsletters. I also worked with IT to streamline employee updates, so now when an employee signs on with the city, they're automatically added to our MailChimp list. So that was important because there was a little bit of a gap there. I was having to manually upload them when they came on, and we get a lot of employees sometimes, so that was, we fixed a gap there. And then our open rate is about 22.7%, which is above the 16% industry average. So I'm really happy about that, and I just love analytics. So the more I can put on something where I can see how many people are engaging with that, the better. So here's our 2018 goals. I know I've been talking a lot, so I'm gonna try and get through this. We want to increase outreach. We want to identify new communication trends and tools, that's always going to be a goal. Those first two are always going to be my goals because you can always do better. Media training, I'm conducting media training with directors, and then I will open it up to who needs it within each department. Track public response and media coverage, that is something we're looking at more ways to do, and they, there are some options out there for public agencies. So there's a lot of work to be done. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Casey. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Thank you, Casey. It's exhausting listening to you, but I love all the numbers. I'm a numbers person too, so I love hearing all of the statistics and stuff. I just have a comment about This Week in Meridian. I really miss the voice. I really, really miss hearing your beautiful voice on there.
Even when it sounds like this?
Yes. See, I'm a multitasker and I'm about time, so I'll be listening to that and doing something else, and I get two for one. Now I have to stop and read it.
Well, okay, that's feed, that's, Councilwoman Mylon, thank you. That is fantastic feedback, and that's feedback I always appreciate. So if we make changes like that, and you have feedback like that, email me for sure because that would probably add on about 20 minutes. So it's not a huge add-on for me to do that. I just need to voice the script, and then my intern, who, we even talked about this, that we might be adding that back in, would just add it to the video and we'll be good to go, so.
This is my opinion, but I really loved it.
You're not the first person, so.
And I've been meaning to let you know, so this is perfect.
Yeah, you're not the first person. So I think we'll add it back in just because I have heard that, and I'll fix my voice between now and no.
Voice is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Great update.
Oh, thanks.
And thanks for everything that you do. I know many of the words that Robert talked about in his presentation are a result of you doing a fantastic job of telling our story. And I just think it's really great to see all the work that you're doing in terms of outreach and connecting with our citizens. I think it's really fantastic. Couple of questions, though. How many different Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor pages do we have? Because I see, I struggle to make sure that I'm following all of them because I want to know what's going on, and it just seems like that there's a lot. And I just, I don't know, as someone who kind of oversees all of our public outreach, if we've got enough, if we've got too many, what role you have in making sure that everybody stays on message?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Kavner, thank you for that question. It's a really good one. When I first got this job, the first, one of the first things I did was try to figure out how many pages we had, because we do, we have a lot. And I looked over all of them because what, and I, there's one still on Facebook that I'm wondering if we need to drop, because what can happen is you can try and put your audience in too many places, and then you lose them, you're just stretching them too far. What I found, I'm still, there is still one that I'm considering dropping on Facebook. So after going through that process, there were a few that we dropped, a few that could be made into groups, which is a different type of engagement. I can't, I don't have a number for you, but I could send you a list of what we have.
I love that.
With, yeah, because I have all the lists of what we have. I'll tell you, on Facebook, all of our parks made, they made a Facebook page for all of our parks. And when I first saw that, I thought, no, 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 we don't need a Facebook page for all of our parks. But then, after thinking about it, and we talked about it, if we don't make the page, someone else might. And so we don't use those pages, those parks pages, other than Story Bark Park, because that's a real niche audience, and that's a great, that's a great one to use. We don't really use those pages, but we have ownership over them, and so that's good, you know, because there are, there are parks, so if we ever do want to use that, we have that. So there are some Facebook pages like that that we have, just in case. But yeah, I can definitely send you a list.
Madam Mayor, Philip. Casey, what about boosted posts? Talk to me a little bit about what your budget is for spending to boost posts, what warrants a decision to make, this post needs to be boosted, this one doesn't. That part was always fascinating to me. When I see stuff, sometimes I'm like, oh, I wonder why we're boosting that, or why are we not boosting that? So give me educated as to the decision that goes into, into that.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Kavner, and I forgot to answer one part of your other question. The process, if you want to create a social media page, is you have to run it past me first, so that we don't, we do have a process in place for that. And then to your next question, I have $1,000 in my advertising budget. So I have to make, that's a small advertising budget, and where I get the most bang for my buck is on social media, especially on Facebook. So I use most of that on Facebook throughout the year. We, I boost our big events that maybe I feel aren't getting a lot of reach out there. Like, obviously State of the City is one I boost. If I have a really engaging post, like the Rising Star video, I'll boost that because I want people to be aware that we have a City of Meridian Idaho page, and that'll let them know. So I boosted that one and said, be sure to like our page, because I want people to know we're out there, so they're following us. With the new algorithm right now, we're not appearing in people's timelines as much. And so I will probably be doing more little boosts, less big campaigns. Like my State of the City was a bigger campaign, but to maximize my money that I have in advertising, I'll probably be doing more smaller boosts, just to get us in people's timelines more. Because my biggest thing is I want people to see what's happening in their community. I think that's really important.
I agree.
And we're not seeing, they're not seeing it, and so that's, that's why I boost.
Thanks.
And I get great analytics from boosting too, by the way.
Awesome.
Yeah, which I love.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Speaking of the analytics and the new algorithm, is there anything that those of us that are on social media can do to help you increase and, you know, help with the reach?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Little Roberts, thank you for that question. You can share our page and then tell people to, oh, now that I don't have it in front of me, there's a dropdown. It just says, if there's a dropdown, you can mark it as your favorite. I had it in my boosted post. Anyone see my boosted post? I wrote it in there. What you need to do, I'll send it to you guys. That's a fantastic question, because I would love that. Share our page, let people know that our City of Meridian page is out there. And then I try and share our police pages, our fire pages, and our parks pages so that people know. Once I get them following the City of Meridian page, I'm gonna get them following Mayor Tammy's page, all that stuff, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, to kind of help answer that, you can sit, you can go into a page, and then where it says follow, you can determine how many notifications you get, so you can get like the standard, or the highlights, or everything. So that's what I do. So I think having the list, maybe send it to everybody so we all know what all the pages are.
I would love to.
And another thing that you can do, especially with Nextdoor, it's a piece of cake and people actually do it. If you, if you go on, you can see within your area that you live in, everybody who's not on there, and I think it starts you off with like 10 postcards where you can have it sent to your neighbors. And so, and then each one of those neighbors that actually signs up from the postcard, then you get awarded more postcards that you can send to more neighbors. So I have like 200 postcards in my bank, and I've literally invited everybody in my neighborhood because I've had so many people sign up from the postcard that they get in the mail, because it says who it's from, whatever. And it's really increased the percentage. I mean, as an HOA board member, like Nextdoor is the worst thing in the world, because everybody becomes a board member with Nextdoor. But, but as a, as a councilman, like it's an amazing thing, and really having the majority of our neighborhood on it, I think has really made a difference in helping people understand what's going on around the area. But Casey, I'm really disappointed in you that we don't have any statistics about the MyMeridian hashtag this time.
Oh, no.
Especially how many times Councilman Palmer.
You have used it, so I'm so proud.
Thrown off the stats, probably.
I'm so proud, and I'm so proud of the branding up there right now. It's just making me so happy going on. I should have brought that, that would have been a great idea. I can look that up. Real quick, what Robert just asked me to remind, or to talk to you all about, real interesting. So the City of Provo does a lot of things on social media and in marketing that I really like. So I reached out to them, and I, I've met with them a couple times over the phone, just to learn from them. They're a little bit larger than us, not too much, about, I think they're about 110,000 to 120,000. Anyway, doing great things in the marketing realm. And so I've talked to them a lot. One thing that was very interesting to me is their budget for advertising. For Facebook alone, their budget is $5,000. So, and I said, well, why, and he said, that's not even enough. We would spend more on Facebook if we could. So that was interesting, from another city. Similar to our size. Did I mention that?
I think I heard you mention it. Any other questions? Thank you, Casey, for all you do.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, item 8D is under Public Works Department on our IPDES programs update.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, you can exhale. I'm not going to give you the update on the IPDES. We have someone I want to introduce that's far more knowledgeable on that particular talk, but before I do that, though, I gotta tell you, I felt the energy drain from this side of the room when I found out that the thousand-pound hairball did not make the, like, top five?
I know, I can't believe that.
I was, we were stunned over here.
I liked the video views, I didn't do the pest post. So it really probably wasn't my top one.
All right, well, it was kind of those personal pride moments. It was just, it felt terrible over here.
I'm glad you brought it up because I loved it.
I, we have not had a chance to formally introduce to you our new superintendent at the wastewater treatment plant, and so I wanted to do that just real quick. In December, we promoted Travis Cassire to the wastewater superintendent. He was formerly our manager of the laboratory, has been with us for over five years, was instrumental in a lot of the effort to bring our facility up to compliance, was involved in the permitting processes, was integral in developing one of the finest laboratories in the state of Idaho now that we have at our wastewater treatment facility. He's integral to the process, he's very knowledgeable, and is, is developing into an incredible leader out at our wastewater treatment plant. So I just wanted to take the moment to introduce you to Travis. Travis is going to give you a nice update on the efforts of primacy as it relates to the wastewater process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Travis. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. And congratulations, Travis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me the time to provide an update on the IPDS program. What I've prepared for you today will cover a quick background of the IPDS program, including what is IPDES, a breakdown of the funding, anticipated changes under the new program, expected impact on the city, and a timeline of related events. The 1972 law, commonly known as the Clean Water Act, established basic structure for regulating pollutant discharges into the waters of the United States. EPA's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permit program controls and regulates discharges. The City of Meridian is currently regulated by the NPDES program out of Region 10 of the EPA, which consists of Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Alaska. Region 10 of the EPA is headquartered in Seattle, and the NPDES system is funded by federal IPDS is state administration of the federal NPDES program. In 2014, the Idaho Legislature approved legislation directing the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality to seek delegation of the NPDES program. DEQ submitted a primacy application to EPA on August 31st, 2016. In short, regulation of Idaho dischargers currently performed from Seattle will be brought into Idaho and into the hands of Idahoans. Moving to state administration is more of a norm rather than an exception. In addition to Idaho, states that do not currently administer their own NPDES program are Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Mexico, the District of Columbia, and various territories, including Puerto Rico. The city has been involved in the IPDS development process. We have been involved in development of IPDS guidance documents. City staff members have served as a resource for technical input. The input has been well-received and resulted in favorable changes to guidance documents as they have been developed. In this process, city staff members have developed professional working relationships with the IPDS program staff, and city public works staff have challenged laboratory certification requirements. These requirements would have been beyond what the federal program requires and would incur additional cost for the city. Additionally, IDQ has reached out to us during development period for information, such as our bis thalate study, and for how we use NetDMR, which is the EPA's electronic reporting IPDS will have a total annual funding of $3.1 million. User fees will account for $1 million of the funding, which is roughly a third of the cost. The remainder will be funded from the state general fund and federal dollars at $2.1 million, which makes up the remaining two-thirds. So looking more closely at the one-third cost comprised of user fees, we see that the fee structure for permities is by the type of permit issued. we see that the fee structure for permittees is by the type of permit issued. The majority of permits will, in general, fall under one of three types, municipal, industrial, or stormwater, with the stormwater permit scaled by the size of the property. You'll notice, uh, for municipal permits, the fee is based on EDUs. An EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit, which is calculated as a population served divided by the average number of people per household. For context, there are over two thousand users in the state of Idaho. Fees will be distributed among individual municipal and industrial stormwater general permits. IDQ has indicated that the rationale behind this breakdown, with municipalities bearing the majority of the cost, stems from determination by IDQ that the majority of time and labor spent will be working with municipal dischargers. Furthermore, IDQ has mentioned wanting to evaluate this fee structure in five years to ensure that they are covering expenses. So, what is the funding going to be used for? Funding will be used to staff the program. IDQ will conduct permitting, compliance, enforcement, and oversight of regulated entities in Idaho. They will issue permits for point source discharges into rivers, streams, and lakes. To do this, IPDS will have twenty-nine full-time employees, seven administrative employees, fourteen compliance employees, and these are the staff members that will receive and evaluate the required reports that the WRF generates, things like monthly discharge monitoring reports and progress report on construction. They will also be responsible for performing onsite audits at the wastewater plant. And finally, there will be eight permitting employees. These are staff members, um, that'll evaluate a permit, uh, a treatment plant's historical data and determine everything from the pollutants to be regulated, the frequency of monitoring, and the numeric concentration of mass limits that will end up in the permit. So what will change under IPDS? There will be local representatives, local representatives of the program. Access to IPDS staff will be easier via state and regional offices, which are in Boise, and IPDS will have easier access to us as well. And what will remain the same? Uh, all federal, uh, regulations and standards will remain. Anti-backsliding laws will remain. Uh, the city's current NPDS permit will not be affected during this permit cycle by the change to IPDS. You might be wondering what anti-backsliding means. In general, the term anti-backsliding refers to regulatory provisions that prohibit the renewal or reissuance of an existing NPDS permit that contains effluent limits or permit conditions that are less stringent than those, uh, established in the previous permit. This means that we shouldn't expect a major rollback of the program. Uh, the mission of IPDS, like NPDS, will still be to regulate point source discharges for the protection of water quality. I've broken down the impacts of the IPDS program on the city, and will address the IPDS fee, as well as identified pros and cons. So if you will recall, the fee for municipalities is based on EDUs. Based on the most recent census data, the city has thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eight point nine EDUs. When calculated at the IPDS rate of a dollar seventy-four per EDU, the City of Meridian's IPDES fee is fifty-nine thousand one dollar and forty-three cents annually. The first bill for this will be sent to Idaho municipalities in October of two thousand eighteen. Uh, the fee, uh, is identified and planned for in the base budget, uh, planning process currently underway for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. And going forward, there are three things that could affect this cost for the city. The first is change to the city's population. Uh, second is change to the city's EDU, and those are both defined by the census. And the third would be IDQ changing their fee rate of a dollar seventy-four per EDU. We anticipate some possible positives from the program. Uh, negotiations for permit renewals will now be done here in the Treasure Valley. We'll have easier access to IPDS staff, so permit riders could be brought onsite to show them the facility that they're developing regulations for. Uh, to date, the city's interactions with the EPA, such as for proactive, uh, development-related communication, uh, permit development-related communication, takes place with an EPA official in Seattle. This was the case during development of the city's current NPDS permit, which was issued in August of two thousand seventeen. Uh, during this time, city employees were in contact with the permit rider, challenging decisions and raising questions. Uh, the permit rider is only onsite at the city's WRF one time. So there's one chance to show him how well we maintain our facility and explain our unique issues to him in person. Um, additionally, there should be a typically shorter timeline for permit renewals. There are both pros and cons to this one. Uh, the standard cycle for permit review and renewal is five years. The city's previous permit was an administrative extension for thirteen years. Hopefully, the upside of having a permit renewed more frequently is that we won't see large-scale sweeping changes to the permit, like we did in the last permit renewal, uh, going from just a handful of regulated parameters to pages and pages of regulated parameters. Um, so this could make planning and budgeting easier to manage. Uh, we're also hopeful for base and wide solutions. So this means that from IPDS, we are anticipating consideration of solutions like water quality trading options. So we could have more options in how we are regulated than just X concentration, um, at the end of the discharge pipe. So, what are some of the risks? Uh, we anticipate increased inspection and audit frequency. IPDS is right here in our state with their, uh, office local in the Treasure Valley. Within the first year, IPDS plans to perform onsite inspections of all facilities in the state. Even though we do not anticipate any violations, every audit is an opportunity for IDQ to identify a permit violation, and our current permit is far more complex than the last. Uh, more timely permit renewals also poses some risk. Each permit renewal is an opportunity to receive a new limit in our permit. At that time, the IPDS permit rider will evaluate the data from the previous permit period and determine if new limits are necessary. Uh, we also expect a general higher level of scrutiny from IPDS. They will have staff dedicated just to inspections in Idaho, which is something that was, uh, limited with the EPA. Uh, here's a timeline for IPS program phases. They will begin issuing IPDS municipal permits in July, uh, July first, two thousand eighteen. They expect to have the IPDS program fully implemented in mid-two thousand twenty-one. Uh, these are some of the projects IPDS is currently working on. Uh, the city will participate in IDQ-provided training on the e-permitting system in May. And the IPDS guidance meetings and development of additional guidance documents will continue throughout two thousand eighteen. And upcoming milestones regarding IPDS. Uh, first is the IPDS pending rule, uh, which was adopted by the Board on November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. It will be effective at the adjournment of the two thousand eighteen legislative session. Locally, uh, one of the first cities to work with IPDS on their permit renewal will be the City of Boise. Uh, we'll be watching that process to see how it goes for them. And the City of Meridian WRF must reapply for a permit reissuance on or before February first, two thousand twenty-two, which means that the next permit reapplication process will be directly through IDQ's IPDS program rather than through the EPA directly. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Going back to the fifty-nine thousand dollars a year, um, in, in fees that we pay to IPDES, that, that's for administration and the process. What, what is in our budget, and what are we currently paying? Are we currently paying the, the same amount of money to NPDES, or?
So currently, uh, the program is run by NPDS, so it's funded by federal taxes. Um, the fifty-nine thousand one dollar will be planned in, in time for next year. It's being planned into this year's base budget.
So it's additional to anything that we've spent?
Yes.
Until now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? We have no choice. Okay, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Item eight E, under council, a discussion for the election process follow-up. I don't know who's leading this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I don't either, but I'll start. Um, at, when we last spoke about this and discussed, and at least started the discussion of the current system and the, the memo that was produced by, uh, I think Legal brought it, with what communities are doing by the seats versus, uh, the pooling at large, um, election process. It sounds like there was a good discussion of pros and cons of each. Um, there clearly are pros and cons of each system, and there were some questions of trying to get some additional data that might assist in making a determination whether a change would be appropriate for the City of Meridian. I don't, I assume that's been done, or been gathered by whomever, uh, needed any data to the extent it exists. I, I didn't see or find, and I don't think there is any data that would give some objective measurement of, of, um, participation using one particular format or the other. It's, unless there's some municipality that recently switched, that might be anecdotal to see if you get better turnout. But nonetheless, that's where the conversation ended, but we wanted to make sure we brought it back. If, if anyone on council wanted to drive this forward and, and make a case for it, we clearly wanted to have an opportunity to close the discussion one way or the other. That's the update.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess since I brought this up in the first place, um, I, I feel that we should change the way that we do things to the pool system, and I, I can reiterate some of the, some of the reasons. Um, I think that it levels a playing field, I think more people would run for office. And not only, you know, sometimes people don't want to run against an incumbent because, well, they don't, they just don't feel like they could win directly, or, if they only, they're like, well, you're doing an okay job, I don't dislike you, so I'll just not bother. And so I think that not having the direct opponent situation, even people that you like, and your friends would run for office if they're, if it's just put into a loop. Um, it also prevents somebody from backing out at the last minute to ensure that their opponent does get the winning seat. Those are the, this less intimidating, I just, yeah, and those are pretty much the, the main reasons. I think there were some other, some other people had some good insight as well.
Thank you, Genesis. I, I, um, asked some of the citizens that were at the coffee with mayor, and they mirrored some of your comments, um, that people interested in running for council would be running for council, not running against someone. And I think that was the, the biggest piece of feedback. They didn't understand the, the seat system, because it wasn't a geographic, um, area that was, that the seats represented, they were pretty random. And so they said that this would be more intuitive, and, and maybe you want to put it on the ballot uh, for citizens to weigh in like, um, they did with the increasing seats from four to six. And, and that is the feedback I got.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Lil Roberts.
I didn't weigh in last time, um, because I was very unsure. I think both have the pros and cons, but the more that I've chatted with people, the more I am thinking that the pooling would encourage, because I've talked to several people that have kind of been on the fence, that would have gone ahead and run had it been a pool situation, and not, I have to pick a person to run against if there wasn't an open seat. As we've seen before, they tend to be much more, um, many more turnout on an open seat than do, for the most part, um, than do when there's an incumbent. So I think that maybe a pool definitely has some, some things that we should have a serious discussion about and maybe consider, like you suggested, putting it out to the people to see what they think.
And, and even when we increased, or we had a public hearing when we considered, um, increasing from four to six before council wanted to, to explore it further, they did have a public hearing on it, and we actually had some participants weigh in.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Um, I'm still not convinced. I think if you're doing a good job, if you've done, if you've been a great public servant, you've been engaged, um, you've reached out, you've been honorable, you've served with integrity. I think that, that the chances of, um, you winning reelection versus having incumbents is gonna be the same. So I, I'm not fully convinced. I think a more interesting discussion, if you want more people to be involved, isn't necessarily going to a pool system. Let's talk about term limits. I think that if you really are engaged with the, with the public, and you really want to make a change, and if you, um, want to really mix this up and get the public involved, I, I would, I, no guarantees, because I haven't had this conversation, but I would, I would bet a lot of money that people would be way more supportive of term limits than a pool system. So if we want to have serious discussions about mixing it up, let's do it the right way. Just put someone on for eight years and kick them out. You know, I mean, that's my point of view. If, if you're serious about it, that's the discussion of my point of view. If you're serious about this, term limits is the way to go, not the pool system.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Amen. I ask a little further. Um, one, but really, not really, it's, I, I feel the exact same way. I, I think Meridian's different. I don't know that it, that the city is negatively affected by the way that we do it, given that we're definitely in the minority of, of the way the cities do things. Um, we're in the minority of the way cities do things in a lot of ways, and I don't think we're hurt by it, but term limits is a fascinating concept for, uh, a city council. I don't know if anybody else in Idaho has that, or what the, how many around the country do? But I love the idea. I don't want to be here forever, but, and I'd love it if whoever replaces me one day isn't here forever either.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
The, with this type of discussion, if the, a pooling system, uh, is that, if that's the way to get the pooling ballot, so to speak, if there's, and I don't recall the mechanism, when it was moved to four to six, as far as an advisory vote, but getting public input through that fashion certainly seems to be, would be a valuable asset to have, and, and a public hearing as well. And it didn't sound like if we're going forward, it's a decision that has to occur in the next six months, but to get that process started, it seems to be one appropriate way to move the ball that direction.
I think in order to put it on the ballot, you need it in September, is that? The language, all approved, and, and all of that?
Madam Mayor, that sounds about right. I was looking over at Robert, because I know we've talked about this, and he's, he's nodding as well. And, um, while I have the floor, I could see the, the process going, that you would have the advisory vote, and if you choose to, to move forward, you would direct us to draft an ordinance, and then you'd have your public hearing, uh, to consider that ordinance. That, that would be one suggested way to map this out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
It's a question, I guess, for, for Legal, it's an interesting take. My mindset was almost one-hundred eighty degrees. We would have a public hearing first, hear from our citizens, take that into consideration before we put it out for an advisory vote. I mean, there's, I guess there's two different ways to skin that cat. I don't know if there's a preferred or not.
Madam Eric, Councilmember Kavner, ex- exactly, it's totally up to you. The only legal mechanism is that if you do desire a change, it has to be in the ordinance where you remove the seats and establish the pool. Could be at the end of everything.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Um, process itself, you know, there, there's the way, there's a way to do things, so I'm, I'm good with that. I'm also okay with term limits. I think that they're two separate conversations, and I'm, I'm gonna be happy to, to discuss the term limits. Um, I think there should be term limits in all of government personally, so, um, I guess my question with, I don't know where I was going with that. Oh, with, I guess with the term limits, that's a different discussion. I say that, and then I start talking about it. To lose half of a council all at the same time is, also can be hard for a city, for their, for the new council, for the mayor's office, for the, for the, all of the staff. So, just figuring out how to, I had to, I didn't, something else. I'll save that for that conversation, sorry.
So, any direction, um, would this council like to? You asked the public to weigh in? So any direction would this council like to, to ask the public to weigh in? If this should be an advisory ballot measure, or what, what is your direction?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'd be supportive of scheduling an upcoming public hearing on this issue, let our citizens come. I think we've got lots of mechanisms for them to come and share their thoughts, formalizing something that is a public hearing. If, I know that if, why I feel a certain way, if I hear a certain amount from our citizens that think the other way, that's compelling information to have. I'd be supportive of a public hearing before we make any other decisions about, to maybe include something on the ballot or not.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
I agree with Councilman Kavner that I think we should get some public input. I do also agree with Councilwoman Mylum that they are two separate issues, term limits versus a pool. And so I would like us, if we want to discuss both of them at the hearing, to make sure that they're separate issues. But I would definitely like to see us go ahead regarding the pool.
Madam Mayor. The only problem I see with putting it on the ballot is putting it on there in a way that the public will understand what it, what it means. You know, it's for us, it's like, we do, you know, we, we are all here, we know how it works. A lot of people don't understand, what do you mean a seat? And does that represent this? And the, the concept itself is not something that they think about ever, or on a regular basis. So I think the wording would have to be so important if we're considering putting on a ballot. I think it's one of those things that's hard to get across.
I think maybe our legal, or we, we could probably reach out and see how best to frame it, because I would agree. I, I think a lot of the things that happen, that are put on the ballot, the language is everything. And in terms of trying to be neutral and not lead, but to give enough information to truly get the public's opinion.
Madam Mayor.
And maybe part of the public hearing, legal could provide an idea of what that, that language could be.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner, and then Ms. Mylum.
Madam Mayor, it's fine. I'm fortunate that I, I get to sit next to legal, and so I had asked Ted that very question, if they could have sample ballot language for our public hearing, and legal feels confident they'd be able to do that. So you summarize what I was going to say already.
Okay.
You got consensus.
Ms. Mylum.
No, I'll just, but I'll keep it in.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm really looking forward to the yard signs along the side of the road that say, yes on Meridian Pool. No on Meridian Pool.
Right.
Maybe we could reuse some signs.
Oh, my God.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We'll schedule that public hearing and eat the elephant one bite at a time.
Very good. Counsel, we had a strategic plan update following your boards and up, your commission board updates and...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, we've got some staff here as well, if it would, if we could switch that order and, and get the strategic plan update going right now, and, and put it before our commission and board update and legislative F and G.
I think in light of the lack of time, what I would like to do is, is introduce it, ask the staff that has stayed here to do their closeouts, and then we can do the high priority areas and the modifications next week.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
For the sake of consistency, I appreciate that we've had staff sitting in here, but could we just do the entire update next week? It would give council a quick chance to grab a bite to dinner before we jump into our next meeting.
Well, I, I do want to value our staff time that has stayed until 5:35 to be told you're not needed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Just as one council member, I'd, I'd value their time when they don't feel like they have to be rushed to make a certain hard deadline, give us the opportunity to engage in those particular elements of the strategic plan that are being presented.
Okay, well, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'm on a diet, and so if we want to do it now, we certainly, I would be okay for it, but whatever.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
For me, I mean, given, you know, where we got the email on Friday, I have not had a chance to even look at it. I, I think having the extra week to even dive into that before anything, and then having the entire conversation at once, I think would be most advantageous to the, the process of dealing with the strategic plan, given how every other conversation about the strategic plan has ever gone. So I really want to wait.
Madam Mayor.
You said something.
Sorry, over here, sorry.
Mr. Kavner.
And just a thought, because I appreciate staff's time, and, and I don't know how council would feel about continuing this till next month, so that they're not having to be a kind of the whim of a traditional city council meeting that have had full and long agendas. That would give Councilmember Palmer ample time to review the, the updates, as would give all of us the chance to review, and maybe would make our conversation more on point next month. Again, I don't know how the rest of council, madam mayor, how you feel about that, but that may be an appropriate step to respect their time.
Well, I, I guess we will put this on next week. I, I stayed in town to do this, but it is what it is. So thank you, everyone, for sticking around. I didn't know this would be the last thing on our agenda, or I would have said it right out of the gate. So appreciate it, and we'll put it on next week.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I don't know, I was trying to come up with a solution. We could always continue it till after our next meeting, just hear from the staff that's here now, and then any discussion can take place in a couple hours, or whenever we're done with our next meeting. If, we didn't, I didn't, we didn't realize that you had stayed in town for that purpose, so if that, somewhere in the middle.
Is our meeting at six?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'd be inclined to go now and just, just get it started.
Okay, well, we'll get through at least closeout. I don't see arrows. Oh, I see arrows. Okay, well, we'll at least kick this off. I, I spoke with Councilman Burton on what the, the most appropriate fashion to present this would be, and this is kind of the format that we decided on. So we'll, we'll just get into one through three and get you through the closeouts, and ask for any follow-ups on the areas that have been closed out to date by previous action. So number one, in review of the current status, I, I thought it was important to take a minute and bring you up to speed on some of the steps that have happened since October. Key events that have happened in December, our director team met for a full day and walked through the entire strategic plan and discussed every single objective. So they made sure not only the leads understood it, but so did the rest of the team, and were able to ask questions to, to get more detail. One of the, the most important steps that we have taken is that we hired Vincent. He has been such a great addition to this effort in terms of bringing it all into one, bringing common language, and I'm going to tell you in just a minute, a few of the things that he has done since he's been on the team. He has met with all of the directors following that meeting in December and reviewed each of their objectives with them. The objective leads then reviewed their goals and tactics to make sure that their intent was clear, and working with Vincent has really worked on making sure that we do have some common language and it all works together. Through that, then he rounded it up, looked at the entire plan, and we vetted each of the, the modifications that you'll be looking at next week. Once Vincent was put on, on board, he spent hours combing through all of our council meetings, watching the videos, and looking at all the different changes that the strategic plan has morphed into. And with that, he has also contacted local municipalities, both in the area, in the Pacific Northwest, and he has formed a cohort group that has really given them some feedback on what they're doing in their communities, and how he could incorporate some of that feedback into ours. He has also approached the private sector and looked at what they're doing with their strategic planning, how they are doing their key performance indicators, and looking at best practices. So he's brought that all into what you have in front of you today. You have a red line vision, a version in both the spreadsheet and the, the document that we'll be asking you to take action on after all this is discussed. And Vincent will be attending a local government innovation conference in April to look further at what we can do to, again, continue to make this more user-friendly and make greater This is the objective dashboard that he developed. You'll have this in your quarterly updates in, in terms of where we're at with our strategic plan. You saw that in the most recent quarterly update. This tells you that, well, in October, we had nine percent completed with six total objectives. The current progress, we have sixteen complete with ten objectives, and five objectives are nearing completion. They're around seventy-five to ninety-nine percent complete. Four objectives have been completed since last October, which you'll hear the closeout in just a moment. This dashboard will reflect the total number of tactics that have been completed in the plan, with twenty-two percent completed as of last October, six, or thirty-six percent have been completed to date, with nineteen percent in progress. Forty-five percent of the plan has not been started, and this is at the end of year two. So the closeout reports, each department lead will bring an overview of the completed objective, and this will give those that opportunity to talk about what they, what work they have done, and to discuss the key milestones. So Casey Emery will provide an update on 3.8.1. Vincent will present in place of Chief Neumeyer to update on 3. C.1. Christina Barney will provide an update on 4.9.2, 4. D.2, if you were tracking me. Steve Sitaway will update on 5. A.2, and then we'll have a follow-up on the closeout that we had in 1.8.2, and Brenda will do one on 2.8.2. So without further ado, I will call Casey up and discuss 3.8.1.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm excited to talk to you today about strategic objective 3A1. It was to ensure all city departments are using effective and efficient strategies in their marketing of city events and activities in order to increase participation and create a greater level of engagement between the community and local government. So some important events we took, we identified current events within the city and current marketing strategies. Then I formed a committee to discuss these marketing strategies and figure out if current events met the mission, vision, and values of this, of the city. We researched what other private and public entities are doing to market their events and gauge success. We applied current strategies and research to develop a best practices checklist for employees. The committee that I had formed at the beginning helped finalize this list, and after distributing it, a few members have already told me that it's been very helpful, so that's fantastic to hear. Identified ways to gauge success of the event, something that is very important but often forgotten, those postmortem after those events. And again, staff members said this would be very beneficial, a step that they were forgetting after events, that now it'll just be part of the process. Easy checklist, easy to follow. So performance, performance measures. Consistent marketing of city events, ease of marketing, which is time savings, I'm all about streamlining, so we've given different ideas for reaching different audiences. Marketing ideas to elevate participation to target levels. Evaluation process to determine the success for city events activities. Number five, more goals will be met in future city events. Six, we have a city survey performance measure, quality and variety of special events, festivals. We want to increase, we had sixty-seven percent rated good or excellent, we want to increase that to seventy-five percent. In city survey, I want to add a new question, the effectiveness of communications about events, because I want to see what people are thinking after we've implemented these new, this new best practices. So when it comes to marketing events, this strategic objective identified gaps that we had in the city. We host several events each year, each department, more people in the departments than you realize are hosting events with different audiences, and we're talking about even our education events, our car seat checkups in fire, and so, and all the way to our community block party, which is a huge event. The best practices checklist that resulted in this objective gives those putting together events, a guideline for what works and what marketing methods are out there that they can utilize based on their goal for their particular event. And it's streamlined, it streamlines our marketing across departments. Another gap was the post-analysis of events, so the initial spreadsheet I sent around to departments required them to look closely at their events, identify goals and audiences they may not have been aware of with all of their events that they were putting together. This was helpful. It's something we often forget to do, look back and assess the outcome of an event. So from here on out, with the development of the event analysis spreadsheet, we've made it easier for staff to analyze their events, to see if they're meeting their goals, and improvements they can make in the future. You have any questions? I guess I have one more thing, the implementation. I've shared the two documents with those who market or organize events, and I will check back in with them in a year to see if they've helped, or if we need to make modifications to those documents. And I, it won't be a year, I'll be checking back in with them periodically, and I've also said that if any of them want to meet with me to go through that, I'm more than happy to do so.
Thank you, Casey.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Casey, as a result of this process, were there community events that we are no longer going to do or support?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, there are not. We found that they all met the mission and vision and values of the city. There were some, that, I felt, but I know that some people now, that they've done the event post-checklist, we have one event that maybe they're considering might not be included next year, but that's for them to decide, as far as I'm concerned, it meets the mission, vision, and values. But I think those checklists provide a really good opportunity for these departments to really hone really hone in on what events they want to focus on.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Is then the, the effectiveness of the, of the overall event, is that determined via the city survey, or is that done via your checklist that you've created?
Well, the city survey helps us gauge success from the citizens. The event checklist is kind of a post-mortem where you can go through after the event to talk about what went well and what didn't, and a checklist of did you reach your goal, did you reach your audience, that sort of thing. But the survey is really our way to gauge citizens, and we also have polling opportunities on Nextdoor.
Great idea.
Which is something that's part of our, marketing best, best practices that people can consider.
Madam Mayor, sorry. That, that brings up an interesting point. I guess maybe, could you share with us what some of these best practices are, and is it best prac, I mean, you take an event like, you know, Christmas parade, that's much different than like the Holiday Bazaar. And do you apply the same tactics to both events, and how, and who's determining what's effective for each event and what's not?
That's why the best practices are really set to give these people organizing events that, hey, look, this is what works. If you want to reach this audience, you use this. If you want to reach this audience, you use this. And here are, here's what we do with our particular events, but here's some other options for you. If you want to try and go here, you can go here. So it's kind of a choose your own adventure.
Great.
My favorite kind of books, by the way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Vince has gotten very intimate into the, the plan, so he can give everyone's report, actually.
So I have the pleasure of delivering this three C one, develop a local incident management team to respond during and after times of community crisis. And Chief was going to deliver this, but he had a, he had an arbitration hearing to go to, so I'm up here talking to you about it. So a couple of the key events that happened with regards to this, the, we reviewed our current city capacity to fill multiple needed roles during an expanded incident such as like Snowmageddon. Snowmageddon tested current staffing capability to handle smaller-scale, local-only event incidents. The regional Southwest Idaho Incident Management Team under the State Office of Emergency Management was in place and functional under, under the direction of General Brad Ritchie. Currently, three employees of the City of Meridian are part of the Southwest Regional Three Incident Management Team. And the performance measure was to either, either a Meridian standalone incident team was enacted, or members of the City of Meridian are part of the regional IMT. And so the notes I got from Chief said, Meridian Command Staff from Police, Fire, Public Works, Parks, and Mayor's Office and Finance are able to assemble and begin incident planning within six hours of notification. In the event of an expanded incident exceeding the capabilities of city staff, the regional Idaho Type III Incident Management Team is able to be assembled and arrive within twelve hours of receiving a request for assistance after a city disaster declaration is made. And I stand for questions, although I'm not totally sure if I can answer them, because I would probably refer you to the Chief.
You do have a backup over there, so maybe Charlie has your back, because he's been very integral in the command side of things. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Vincent, I don't need an answer now if we don't have it, but I'm just curious, if, if enacting this team will have a budgetary impact? And if so, what's the estimated amount?
I do not have an answer to that question at this time.
Well, I'll, I'll say that if a team is needed to be developed, at that point, you're not going to care about costs because there's an emergency situation.
I guess, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If a, if an emergency happens, I guess we don't want to develop a team, we would want to already have the team. And so my question is, what would be the cost to develop that team?
Mr. Kavner, we do have ICS training that we do in fire and police, and many of the other areas necessary to respond in an incident type of situation. So they do go through IS, ICS training already, so they're, they are essentially trained and ready, stand ready to be pulled together in the need for responding to an incident.
Madam Mayor, Council, Councilman Kavner, just to expand on that a little bit, that was part of the, the, I think that the questions that the Chief went through, where he realized that the cost of develop, of fully developing a fully licensed IMT that was staffed only by the city had a lot of costs associated with that, which is part of the reason why they opted to say there's a, there is one that it can be activated within twelve hours here that has no cost, and the current staff that we have that goes through the ICS training that the mayor does is adequate to me are, are, are events that we don't need to call in an outside team currently.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that the IMT is covered by the county and where the expertise is needed, the state.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I just want to touch on, on the comment you made about if there's an emergency, we won't care about the cost. I'd contend that no matter what the emergency is, the cost should still be a relevant discussion. I think we all agreed that during the, the snow tato that we had last year, that, that while, we all agreed that it was an emergency, but the cost was still relevant, and then we all got a call from Arbor saying, here's what we figured out, what we can do, here's how much it's going to cost, and asked some relevant questions, you had quick answers, and yeah, let's do it. But I think the cost was a very important aspect of that conversation, and, and no matter the level of emergency, it shouldn't just be a blank check, the conversation should happen.
That's an important point, but the Snowmageddon or Snowtato, whatever you refer to it, is, was not the, the crisis incident that, that you trained towards. And oftentimes, authorization to spend happens with the state of emergency, and then you almost come back when you have a breath to bring it to, to the council. And that is what they train for, and those kind of things will be brought in to the elected officials for that spending authority as soon as they're able. But in a real incident, and I'm not trying to minimize Snowmageddon, but it was a great exercise to, to really start to pull together, what is that communication tool? What does the planning team do? What does the finance team do? And it, it was a great exercise for our team to really pull together and, and work out some of the bugs, and, and be able to outline something that, that ideally would be followed. But again...
Madam Mayor. I might jump in here a little bit. I know there were discussions in a meeting last week that occurred between Chief Neumeyer and General Ritchie, who oversees the Idaho Office of Emergency Management, and to the discussion that's being had here, whether or not we have an individual team just within the City of Meridian, or we have people, employees of the City of Meridian that are part of a team that coordinates with the state. What is coming out of those meetings is that anytime that team would be deployed, the state would reimburse the city for any costs incurred by that team. So.
Thank you.
Another lesson learned in Snowmageddon, right?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
And Christina, I believe, is the next objective, yes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having me this evening. So I have objective four D two, which is to develop a comprehensive, family-focused health and wellness program for city employees. This objective specifically is to curtail her healthcare costs and improve the experience rating for the city, family employees, and be more fully integrated into the health and wellness program offered for city employees. So some of the important events in, leading up to the completion of this, was we added communications about family involvement in the wellness events and emails that are going out to the employees. We have communicated that spouses are encouraged to participate in the onsite biometrics, so the idea behind that is to know your numbers, know if you're in any high-risk areas, and hopefully get any preventative care. We have provided access to covered spouses through the Well Connected website through Blue Cross, beginning January one of eighteen. So that gives covered spouses access to the health coaching, meal, meal planning, fitness tracking, online coaching that the employees have access to as well. Spouse and children have been invited to participate in the Wellness Works Challenge, the Heartwalk, and St. Luke's Fit One events, and those are advertised through those, those individual events. So this objective through those efforts have been met. The performance measures, however, will continue to be evaluated and to determine for success. Industry standard for measuring these types of changes in this program is five years. So we are just now starting to collect that data, and we'll continue to evaluate that to see if this change has been successful, and then if we need to make any changes in the future. So I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Christina. Questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I recognize I'm, I'm going to kind of be repetitive. Repetitive tonight. What, if any, budgetary impacts will this program have, and what decrease in the experience rating are we hoping to achieve?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavner, I don't think that we have set that yet. I kind of want to see what the engagement is and see what the trend is over the first five years before we even set a metric that we may or may not be able to obtain.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, pleased to report on strategic objective five A two, which is the one focused on public sports facilities and partnerships surrounding them. The Home Court Partnership, as we've reported back last year, was the first success and major step toward growing our public sports facilities back in 2016. Last year, in early 2017, I think you'll remember, many of you will remember that we came before you to further define this particular objective. It was originally writ, excuse me, written to be more, less about public, more about private, and ideas like attracting Boise Hawks to the Meridian or something like that, along those lines. As a result of that discussion, council directed us to insert the word "public" and change the focus specifically to Phase One of the South Meridian Regional Park, so that all of the tactics were modified at that point and changed to focus on Phase One, development of Phase One of South Meridian Regional Park and getting it out to bid. And as part of this process, we did reach out to all known potential partners. I believe there were fourteen of them. Five of them offered to meet with us face-to-face. As a result of those meetings, none of them had the financial resources to actually enter into a fiscal partnership at this time, but we remain open to, to partnerships at, at all times. Mike Barton was before you in January, giving a detailed project summary of the, of the project from 2015 through 2018. I want, he is here today if there are any specific questions related to the project itself. But while I'm up here, I want to express my own appreciation and then send some kudos his way for the immense undertaking it has been to take this project through to where it is now under construction. As a reminder, we, our bid strategy, including winter bidding, we sent the bids out to one hundred and thirty-three different contractors. It was, sixteen bid packages were issued, thirty bids were received, and on January ninth of 2018, council awarded those contracts, which completed this objective. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Council, any questions? Mr. Kavner.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Steve, with kind of the results of not any community partners necessarily being in a position right now to hop on board in a partnership, does that impact any phasing plans, amenities plans, or anything related to the future that we need to be aware of at this time?
Nothing at this time. We remain open to partnerships. I think the biggest effect on phasing was the, the line that you saw for the, the gas line that, that runs through the park. Many of the, the sports facilities are in future phases, and we remain open to, and the organizations out there are aware that we're, we're looking for partners, but we're not looking for a partnership that has us footing all the bill and giving them all the priority use time. We want partnerships to be true partnerships, and we have a, you know, a partnership forum that's already been through council and approved by that, and when someone is interested, we provide that to them, so, but no specific impacts.
Steve, when does that point occur where maybe we zig instead of zag because we don't necessarily have a community partner that's wanting to be, you know, a financial partner in a particular amenity or structure or something along those lines?
I think it happens constantly. As we go through the process of designing and developing the next phase, we'll be looking for potential partners and our own fiscal resources and impact fees that have come in, and what are we able to do with the funding resources we have, and what could we do with resources that other partners might bring to the table?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. You want to advance that to? Council, the update, the closeout was on the Urban Renewal District, and, and that has an update on our next agenda. So we'll just close with Brenda in, talking about two, two A two, and that was closed out last fall, and we'll update you as to what's happened since then.
Madam Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to say thank you for having me. I know you've had a long night. I thank you guys for all the long nights that you've had recently. Even though we closed this initiative out, it really isn't ongoing for me, you know this. One of the things that we found for the performance measures as far as success of economic development is having a ready team. And most of you are aware of this wedding, or this ready team? This was something, this was a model that we took from Twin Falls when they landed Chibani, and it made a lot of sense for us to make sure that we had a diverse number of businesses, organizations, always at the table. I'd like to say, say thank you to Councilmember Ann Little Roberts. Her role with the chamber was how we were able to put this together. We now have, we will continue this meeting. I have created talking points for everyone, just so that when a company comes in, they're aware of, you know, what they should be talking about, you know? In attraction, they know that the mayor and I are going to come on to the scene and say, hey, this is a great place to be. What they want to hear from are that business-to-business, their peers, and this is a great place to live for, and actually start a business. So we are continuing. I've asked Ashley, because MDC, just to give you an idea of all the organizations that are a part of the ready team, we have MDC, obviously. So I've asked Ashley, as the coordinator for MDC, to kind of push this forward with me. We'll have quarterly meetings just with our partners, and that also includes chamber member businesses. We recently, and many of you are aware of Project Clipper, and when Project Clipper came in, we were able to hold that meeting, and if you remember correctly, that was five hundred to a thousand new employees in, for an insurance company, allotted their customer service. So we held that meeting at United Heritage, and Blue Cross was also there. So they were able to get a feel of what the insurance industry was like here in Meridian. So we'll continue that. The chamber member businesses, there are several, Food Services of America, Micro One Hundred, United Heritage, obviously the City of Meridian. The mayor and I are always part of these. BVAP, a big part of that. CWY, ESI, so that they have sort of a contractor's viewpoint as well. But we have several new members that are coming on board. My colleague, Jana Jones, that was with BVAP, is now with the University of Idaho. She's the Economic Development Director for U of I. You'd be amazed at all the different resources they have for businesses through U of I, just to help companies get started. Lots of connections, lots of foundation help. In addition, Boise State University will also be coming on board, Cece Gasner. She is in charge of tech transfer, so she will also be a part of this ready team. So we'll continue that. Another performance measure is provide annual number of partnerships with brokers, developers and property owners. We actually went through all of our contact sheets. And we've had over 164 contacts with brokers, with developers. Yesterday, I actually, I had two site selectors call me from Chicago. And I had three site requests come in. So on an average day, you have anywhere from, you know, three to five different calls. So we safely, we looked at all of our projects. Most of those projects are always reflected in your dashboard. And then we have the weekly updates with the mayor as well. So we're kind of compiling that. We get back with them. And honestly, you know, one of the things that I tell everyone, we're very lucky to have just a handful of developers that really do a lot of projects here. So we really, on a, you know, one-to-one, you know, first-name basis, where we work very closely with these developers to develop marketing pages for them as well. So those are weekly contacts. And then the final one, performance measure, was maintain an annual database of leads. We do this, once again, through our dashboard. So we had 23 site submissions through the Department of Commerce and through BVAP. Two of those visits came into Meridian as site visits. And that was Project Clipper. And then we also had Project Payback. And that was about 100 back office positions. So two, two of those throughout the year for 23 submissions. And that's about the average. So we're doing that. At one point, we had looked at a new type of database that would, it's more of a customer management. But after seeing about a $55,000 price tag, we said, oh, our contact management. So we've actually kind of maintained that through our outlook. One of the things that I will say to you while I'm up here is that it's never, oftentimes the projects go by code names. It's not to keep the public unaware. It's not to keep each of you unaware. We end up signing non-disclosures primarily because those companies that are looking, they don't want their competition to know. So just always keep that in mind. So sometimes when we, we don't always share everything. Right now BVAP is no longer emailing out the project list. So we'll have to get together to like have those conversations. I'm, you know, I don't put a lot of information on each of, you know, the dashboard. But if you ever have questions, you know, you can always feel free to give me a call. So those are the performance measures that we've closed out because we've kind of, you know, mastered how we're putting these things together. However, they're ongoing daily, weekly activities that I still partake in. So, any questions?
Thank you, Brenda. Counsel, questions? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, just a comment. Thanks Brenda. As you started, there was a whole bunch of questions kind of going through my mind. And you like meticulously answered every single one of them. So we really appreciate the presentation, thanks.
Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, Madam Mayor, just one.
Mr. Kavner.
I have to echo Councilmember Palmer. I'm writing questions and then I'm checking them off as you go through. But just out of curiosity, do you see any trends, any type of industries that are maybe looking at Meridian that council needs to be aware of or things that we can do to help support you and the mayor and your department in these efforts?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Luke Kavner. Actually, there is a couple of projects, and I've brought these up with our liaison, that I will actually engage you with. Right now, we are seeing probably about 90% because of Chibani, it's food processing. We don't have a lot of industrial land. And when these companies come in, they're kind of fearful because of some of our prices are double what they are in other cities. So, you know, I think until some of those other cities fill up the spot, they're industrial, we'll still sit on some of our industrial. But as we look at the comp plan, it might be something that, you know, we look at in other areas. So, but industrial is definitely needed. So that is a big portion. We get a lot of customer support centers. Now, don't let that like scare you because honestly, people get nervous. They're like, oh, it's another call center. It's not another call center. We've actually worked very hard to bring that workforce up. The tax reimbursement incentive is set at a $42,000 a year, 43 now. So they have to have those wages. When we're seeing the insurance companies come in, the insurance companies are looking for certifications. And they're paying to put that workforce through those certification programs. And then, of course, pay lossity. We couldn't have asked for a better, better project. That is actually what they're teaching there to recent, a lot of them are recent grad computer students. That is almost the foundation that they're going to need for every other technology company in the valley. So we keep seeing that go up. Now, one of the things that, when we had some site selectors come in, one of the things they said to us is, I know you don't want to hear this from us, but embrace your entertainment. You have phenomenal entertainment. You know, we just, at the mayor's state of the city, he talked about what Wahoos and the park are doing. They said, go after, you know, you have a couple more places on 84. You've got this half a billion dollar shopping center. You have the racetrack. You have all these things that really are a great destination for families. So they were suggesting going after those types of like Bass Pro, you know, those big types of stores. But not only that, on our wish list is some of those big golfing organizations or, you know, kind of like the Big Owls, but specialize in golf. So we're working with a couple of developers right now to put together a lot of information. And if you go to the strategic plan, I have attached some of our videos for tourism. So it's also just, that's a big part of it, too. A lot of those places want a million people. But with our tourism, we're hitting that every year. So we're working on some things. And so there was probably some things that I'm going to call all you guys in, you know, to be a part of that because I think that they'd really love to see just our diverse council, the council members as part of that. So I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Brenda.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Counsel, I, I guess in light of our next meeting lined up outside, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.